Chair Scott.
Here, thank you. Next up on the agenda is approval of the meeting agenda. I would note that we have three public hearings scheduled for tonight's meeting, but two of them are continued. And so to the extent there are people in the audience this evening to attend, to comment on either the final rezoning and final development plan for 6500 France Avenue or the variance at 3932 and 3934 West 49th Street. Both of those items have been continued to our July 9th meeting. So don't want you to be sitting around waiting for those items and then discover that they've been continued. So any other amendments or additions, subtractions for the agenda this evening? Seeing none, I would take a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
And as a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Next up is approval of the consent agenda. The only item on the consent agenda this evening is the minutes of the regular meeting of June 11, 2014. Are there any modifications to the minutes from the June 11 meeting?
I have my packet.
They were automatically.
Oh. That was in my old cabinet.
Would you like an opportunity to, or?
I don't think I was here.
You weren't here.
You could, well.
I could abstain.
They were emailed.
They were emailed.
Alright. So, any, any other modifications? Hearing none, I'd take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move.
Second. Further discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Next up is the community comment portion of the meeting. This is the portion of the meeting where members of the public are invited to comment on items that are not on this evening's agenda. If you'd like to come up and comment, you can come to one of the side microphones and share your thoughts with us. If you would just tell us your name and address and share your, your comment. Welcome.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman and Commission members, my name is Jim Grootz, and I have lived at 5513 Park Place, Edina since 1979. In February of this year, an adjacent property owner filed plans with planning to obtain a variance in cup. I challenged the survey, and the engineering tech visited the site and saw the problem. Many things were missing, including the over 10 feet in height retaining walls that protect two adjacent properties from the water of the property in question were not showing. The tech agreed and rejected the survey plan as materially inaccurate. Since that initial survey, an additional three surveys have been submitted, and all four surveys do not meet the minimum Edina requirements for all surveys under Minnesota State Building Code 1300.0130. The fourth survey made minor changes and did not fulfill city staff demands. We now have the fourth survey with proposed buildings and a rendering, but none of them are in agreement. The house as shown on the plan cannot be built with the site surveys as submitted. This has been very stressful for all adjacent property owners. The neighbor on our north side could no longer deal with this and sold at a loss and moved to Bloomington. Now we find the house on our north side was sold to a builder who is using the same survey company, and there is now a demolition sign in the yard. Accurate surveys done to at least the Edina City minimum requirements are needed to obtain a building permit per the Minnesota State Building Code. A February Planning Department meeting with all parties attending, the surveyor was asked to come. The surveyor did not attend that meeting. With the fourth survey, my wife asked engineering staff to come to the site. Staff said we did not need a drainage plan to get a cup at the me, at the planning commission, and he would not look at the file until a permit is filed because he has yet, he has, he has already done a special review, or, no, yet he did a special review for the site for the planning department, but yet he had told my wife he wouldn't come out and look. His way to get around, the neighbor's way to get around for filing for a cup is to create two front entrances. The first one at the correct level would be a sliding door and will act as a window in his stairwell. The second grand entrance would be 4.55 feet above the existing entrance. Edina homes in our neighborhood do not have two front entrances. In 2013, Edina City Code adopted the Minnesota State Building Code, which in turn adopts the International Building Code. IRC Residential Code Section R 401.30 Drainage states, "Surface drainage shall be diverted to a storm sewer, conveyance, or other approved point of collection so as to not create a hazard." In summary, it appears city staff is going out of their way to help a new homeowner build what they want to build. We need some direction. Thank you.
Mr. Gross, can I just ask a couple of quick questions?
Go ahead.
Is the survey, so is the, has the structure been built, or is it, has a building permit been issued, or is, where are we in the process?
In the process, what has happened is, is that we have a surveying company that is choosing not to put on the survey the minimum requirements as demanded for all surveys of any sort by the State Building Code.
And I'm just trying to understand if this is an after, an as-built survey, or is this a survey before?
This is, the house, the, no permit has yet been issued.
Excuse me, just a minute. My name is Lori Grootz. I think what you're trying to find out, the homeowner was supposed to come for a variance and a conditional use permit.
And did they?
No. He keeps resubmitting surveys and not giving the information that's needed. And what he's trying to do is, he's trying to avoid to get the CUP so he can build what he wants to build that's not in conformance with code. And his building plans that he shows do not fit with the elevations. His ground elevation in the back is approximately where it is now on the current house, yet his building plans show his basement windows fully exposed.
Okay. So, so I, I mean, without going into all the details, it sounds like you know a lot about this and you've spent a lot of time on it.
We know an awful lot about it and spend an awful lot of time.
Okay. I would like to take another shot at your question, if I may, in terms of the survey. The process is, we have minimum requirements that have to be on every single survey.
Mr. Gross, I understand that. All I was trying to make, I was trying to find out if it was already built or if it hadn't been built.
No.
Okay. So have you talked with Mr. Teague or other building official, other city staff about this issue?
I had, we had, my husband and I had a meeting with Chris Ocker and Cindy Larson back in February when the first plan was submitted. The first plan wanted to cut a six-foot hole in the backyard with a 30 percent grade and didn't show any retaining walls at all that are existing or put any retaining walls in to hold back neighboring properties so they wouldn't collapse into the next yard. I went to engineering first after that, then we had a meeting with Chris and with Cindy Larson. They did send a letter out to the homeowner and gave the requirements, what were needed. The homeowner has not fulfilled those requirements.
Okay. But there has, has there been demolition of the structure yet?
No.
No, there has not. But we have since found out that the new homeowner has had meetings with Carrie Teague and his staff. I know earlier in the process, I did leave a message for Carrie Teague to have him call me. I never got her call back. And when we go in to ask what's going on, we just hear, well, they're still working on it. And they know that we have concerns, but we're kind of being left in the dark. Now today Jackie was very nice. I asked for some correspondence.
Jackie is always very nice.
She is. She's a really good employee.
So is Carrie, actually.
She really is. I don't know, I haven't had an opportunity to speak with Carrie.
I'm betting that you will. Alright, so thank you. I don't, I, you know, we can't kind of dive into the level of detail that you obviously have spent looking at this. I appreciate you coming and sharing your experience. It's, it's always of value for us to hear about what's happening.
I don't want to have to sell my house.
I don't want you to have to sell your house either.
I sit lower than both properties, and right now I'm not getting water from these properties. And I know my properties and the neighboring properties better than anybody else in this city. And they are approving plans without coming out to actually verify if it's accurate.
But I'm just, sorry to interrupt Mrs. Gross, but I just want to verify that no permits have been issued at this time.
Correct.
No.
And is there any work being performed on the site in terms of demolition, excavation, construction?
No. Not at this time.
And I assume that you would let staff know if something was going on before a permit was issued?
Of course.
Good. That, I mean, that's why we have the permit system and so, I'd encourage you to do that.
But we wouldn't receive notification, would we, in advance that a drainage plan has been submitted for permitting? Right now, the drainage plan that's submitted, it is not accurate, it will not fit the site.
Fair enough. So Carrie, is there a, what's the process in terms of neighbors knowing when a building permit has been issued, et cetera?
Yeah, just to give you a little background, the, they did make an application for a conditional use permit and a variance. Conditional use permit was for that first floor elevation. It was deemed incomplete. We didn't have all the information that we needed per the application, so we have an incomplete application at this time. And Mrs. Grootz did contact me today. I'd be glad to meet with you and the neighbors. We can set up a time next week, maybe Tuesday morning works best for me. Think about that, and then we can, we can talk tomorrow.
Okay.
But right now it's an incomplete application.
Good. Sounds like lots of communication would be a good thing on this. Thank you for.
Okay, so Roger hasn't made a final ruling yet?
No, we're still looking at interpretation of the front entry where we have that, the front entry.
And then we wouldn't, we don't see it until, you know, if there's a conditional use permit or a variance, that's when it would come down.
Right. But if the city allows them to have two front entrances to bypass the conditional use permit, we will never get here.
Okay.
If they let them have a sliding door and not have the grand entrance at the top be considered their front entrance. It's a creative way, but I don't think it's what the code, is in the spirit of the code.
Well, I will leave it for you and staff to discuss that, and at some point, if there's a conditional use permit or a variance, it will come back to us. But thank you for bringing this to our attention this evening.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Alright. Are there other, any other comments during the community comment portion of the meeting? Alright, seeing none, I would take a motion to close community comment. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, say nay. Community comment is closed. We move now to the public hearings section of the meeting. As I noted earlier, we have, two of our public hearings this evening have been continued to our July 9th meeting, and that leaves item 6B, preliminary rezoning and variances, Mathias Morrison, 3923 West 49th Street, Edina. Carrie, are you going to introduce this for us?
Okay, thank you, Chair, members of the planning commission. Before you is a preliminary rezoning with variance request. So this is a, as with all of our rezoning requests, it's a two-step process. So this is preliminary approval that's sought this evening. If the city council approves this, you would then see it again as part of a final rezoning package with the variances. So actually, the variances would be acted upon as part of the final, the, the final rezoning package. So this is a site you're also familiar with. We did a sketch plan review a few months back. So this property is located in the 50th and France neighborhood on 49th Street. This is the property highlighted. It's just north of the city's north parking ramp located here. This is the old Edina Realty Building that's been taken down, vacant city-owned lot now, Walgreens on the corner. The property exists today with a two-story, single-family home with a detached garage in the rear. So look at the winter conditions of the home as it existed, or as it exists today. You can see there's an apartment building just to the east of the, of the property, a single-story duplex on the other side. What the applicant is proposing is to tear down that existing single-family home and build a duplex on the property. So rendering of what the structure would look like. The site is currently zoned R1, single-family, single-family district. The, this, this is the zoning map shown here. The red area, that's all the commercial properties, part of the 50th and France area. The crosshatched area, that indicates property that's zoned R2, that's where our duplexes are. Our zoning ordinance is unique in that a duplex can only be allowed in an R2 zoning district, and single-family homes only in the R1 district. So the applicant is seeking a rezoning of the property to rezone that to R2 to allow the duplex. Sure.
Can I just interrupt for one second? Back to the previous slide. Can you point out which lot is the, the other one that we looked at last meeting that's going to be continued to next meeting, the 3932 and 34?
I believe that is this property right here.
So we had some discussion about that property right across the street at the last meeting. Alright, thank you.
So this is a look at the sketch plan that was proposed back in January to give you an idea of what that looked like. Another rendering from the back. So based on the sketch plan review, the applicant initially submitted the application a couple of months ago, and they've since revised the plan. The driveway was located right along the lot line. It needed setback variances on both side yards and also a front yard setback. The applicant since revised the plan to meet the front yard setback. They shifted the driveway that comes into the site. There's quite a large retaining wall along this side here that was right along the lot line. So they've set that in to meet the required setback. So this is the, just the outline of the required setbacks on the site. So the only encroachment would be into this side yard that abuts the apartments to the east. So the request, the total package request here is the preliminary rezoning from the R1 to the R2 zoning district. There's a couple of lot size variances that go along with it, lot area variance. For a duplex, a new lot would require at least 15,000 square feet. The existing lot size here is just under 9,000 square feet. Minimum lot width is 90 feet, and this property is 65 feet wide. Building coverage requirement is 25 percent. The, as proposed here, it's a 32 percent building coverage. That includes 4 percent of the patio area located on the site plan. So the building itself, 28 percent, and 4 percent is the patio, but it is a 32 percent building coverage that's, that's requested. And then the side yard setback variance from 15 feet down to five feet on the east side. So again, there's a look at the building as proposed as part of the sketch plan, and this is a look at the, the structure as proposed this evening. Couple other renderings, and the applicant will go through this as well. One thing I do want to note is the grading plan. As our new requirement, we're requiring the engineer, the grading plans to be done by a profession, professional civil engineer. Those plans have not been submitted as of yet. This application was made prior to us making that change as part of our review here. And also, this is preliminary review, so if this is approved, a condition of approval could be that, that those plans be submitted as part of the final package. We did have the city's city engineer review the, the grading plan, and that, a copy of that memo was handed out before you this evening. And as noted in his, his report, he does have a number of concerns. Some safety concerns associated with that retaining wall, and just the, the grading and drainage in general. So primary issues, there are two. Is the rezoning from R1 to R2 reasonable for the site? And are the proposed variances reasonable for the site? Taking the first issue, staff believes that the rezoning is reasonable. It fits the character of the neighborhood. As we looked at that previous graphic, there's a number of R2 properties already up and down this block. And there's quite a variety of structures, whether it be at one-story or two-story up and down the block. I'll quickly go through these. Most of the duplexes are the one-story, although this is a two-story duplex. Again, look at the existing single-family home. A recently constructed duplex to the north of the site. So again, you see the, the checked area is the R2 properties. Only a couple of, just a few single-family lots left on the block. So staff believes that the rezoning is reasonable. So the second issue are the proposed variances reasonable for the site? And this is where staff believes that the variance criteria is not met. The combination of all the variances here result in the structure that's just too large for the site. Again, it was one of the concerns brought up as part of the, the sketch plan review was the mass and scale of this structure. And as you noted on some of those pictures, the size of the home hasn't, there hasn't been a lot of change in regard to the size, height, and mass. Again, there's a look at the structure as proposed. Some of the concerns were the, the lot coverage variances that were requested, again, associated with the size of the structure. Traditionally, as the planning commission knows, we haven't varied from that lot coverage requirement, especially for a tear-down rebuild. There've been an occasional small addition that's been approved to slightly go over our lot coverage requirements, but I can't recall any that we've approved for a tear-down rebuild. So again, a couple more renderings. So in conclusion, staff doesn't believe that the variance criteria is met. There's reasonable use of the property with the single-family home. The practical, there are practical difficulties here. It's the small size of the lot and the small width. As you see on this graphic, it is the smallest property on the whole street. So there are some, some practical difficulties associated with the size of the lot. The existing home, the built, existing lot coverage is 12 percent, so as proposed, a substantial increase to what's out there today. So with that, staff is recommending denial of the variances and the, and the rezoning as a result of the variances, subject to the findings that are listed in the staff report. With that, I can stand for any questions you might have.
Thank you, Carrie. Just as a reminder to folks, this is a public hearing, so what I'd like to do is take questions for Carrie now, but not commentary on, you know, let's leave deliberation until after we've heard from the applicant and after we've heard from the public. But if there are questions for Carrie, let's, let's get to those right now. Commissioner Shearer?
Carrie, you just made a, I was going to ask this question anyway, and now you made a statement which appears to contradict what I think I'm seeing. My question was with regard to the other lots that are zoned R2 today on the block. And I was going to ask how many of them were short in lot area or width to our current standard? It appears that there are at least several further down the block that are similar to the lot in question that are already zoned R2, although you just made a statement to the contrary.
Some of these that show smaller, they've done the, the lot split down the middle. So I believe if you look at this lot here.
Right, so that's not two separate lots?
It is two separate lots, but with the duplex crosses both lots. So a lot of times when these are platted together, the 15,000 square feet comes out of the two lots in combination.
And then they do a zero setback right on the property line.
Okay, alright, right. That answers the question. Thank you very much.
There are other questions for Carrie? You had mentioned about the variances would, so you said something at the beginning about the variance wouldn't be acted on until the second meeting? What, tell me that again.
Yeah, so this first phase through, you're considering the variances as part of the request, and if you believe the variances are too much for the site, you know, we can deny the whole, the whole thing this first time through. But if you're inclined to approve the project, you do it on a preliminary basis, subject to the final approval, and it's at that time that the variances are finalized. You might have some recommendations to reduce the size of the variances where they would come back for a second?
But just so I'm clear, you're asking us to, if not formally act on, at least give our, our inclination about whether we'd be willing to grant a variance or not?
Correct. That's where this two-step process gets a little awkward, especially when there's variances associated with it. Cause you're, yeah, you don't want to recommend approval of the project, have it move forward, and then deny it the second time through.
Right.
If we're inclined to deny it based on those variances, it's just too much for the site, we would want to act on, on the variances this first time through if it's a denial.
Okay. Other questions? Commissioner Platter here.
I think you said this, but just to confirm, so the reason this is a two-step is because the rezone, right?
Because of the rezoning, correct.
Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no further questions for Carrie, thank you. I'll ask the applicant to come up and tell us a little bit about the project. So if you're going to use the, if you have something to show on the overhead, the, so the center, and you'll need that microphone.
Yes.
The other one's just there for show.
Alright, I won't even look at it. My name's Mathias Mortensen. I'm the architect for the project and the project representative.
Welcome, Mr. Mortensen.
Thank you. I was before you, once before, during a preliminary review process, and I think that was back in January, maybe. And I do want to say that there were a number of comments that were made that pushed me in a direction that I think really made this project better. You may remember that there used to be two drives, and one commissioner mentioned that that created an island, and that was exactly right. It did, and removing that drive, I think, has really made this project better. So I wanted, I wanted to just express appreciation for the process and the review and the nudging, gentle or otherwise, to, to make this better. And then I just, I know we've got roughly a 20-minute time limit, so I just wanted to be brief on walking through a few of, I think, the major components and issues of the project, and then just let you ask questions. So the first thing I wanted to talk about was the site, and this is, this image is not that different than what Carrie just showed. But you do see that the site is unique in that it's an R1. There's only four total lots on this street that are R1. The other 15 are R2 or with respect to the corner lot, what ends up being almost a five-story apartment building. And then within those four, this site is also unique in that, as Carrie mentioned, it is narrow and it, it is smaller, and it's also, it also has different adjacencies. So whereas the two R1s across the street kind of have each other to keep each other company, we're kind of alone, as is the one down the street, on the same side of the street. And then finally, the thing that makes this most unique on the street is that not only are we adjacent to a four-story apartment building and adjacent to the commercial district to the south, we, both of those different uses are part of a height overlay district. So, let's see. Here we go. So I, I wanted to know how unique that condition was, so I did a thorough review of all R1 properties that had, that border on two sides, height overlay districts. And what you see here are all those properties that are, that have that condition. There's only a handful, less than 10. And of that handful, there are only two other properties that are adjacent to a height overlay district of the same magnitude that we are, which is a 48-foot-high district. And of, so of the three, the three properties that have this condition, we are actually unique among those three in that we are on a street that is primarily, predominantly duplexes.
Which are the other two?
The other two are highlighted in orange. So one is, one is in, in the 50th and France area. It's near the, the apartment building on the, kind of the south end. I can't reme- I can't remember what it's called, Point something. And then the other is in the Southdale area. So what I found was not just that we are unique, but that we are actually one of a kind. We are the only property that has this sort of convergence of conditions. And I do think that that's important because it makes this particular site kind of unusual and special. And I think that maybe it warrants just a little bit different kind of consideration. So that's what I, all I want to say about the site. And then I wanted to talk, wanted to talk a little bit about site coverage. So Carrie mentioned that the city calculated 32%, which includes 4% patio. And there's, there's a requirement for 25% or less. I was interested in how our, the size of our building and the coverage of the site with impermeable surface included in that compares to other buildings on the street. Because I think when it comes to site coverage, you've really got two issues. You've got the size of the building and the amount of hardscape. And they're both, they're two different things, and I think you think about them differently. And when it comes to building size, one of the primary considerations is, is the, what kind of impact does the size have on the neighborhood and the street? And so I collected data from the city assessor's office and calculated footprint areas of every property, of every structure on the street, and calculated the street, the width of street front facades. Because I believe those two things are major components to the kind of, at least the kind of visual impact that a building has on the street and on the neighborhood. And what I found was that we are considerably under the average footprint size by about 200 square feet in that when it comes to the front elevation, the facade, the length of the facade, we're even further below the average. So with the average footprint size is 2,440, and we're at about 2,240. And whereas the general average length is almost 60 feet, we're at a little over 37 feet. And I wanted to stress that because one of the goals of this design has always been that, that it presents to the neighborhood a sort of diminutive facade. And that it becomes a little bit more cohesive with the street because of that. And that's why upfront, even though, you know, we have a narrow lot, I sacrificed some width to make it even narrower in the front. And that was intentionally meant to just make this just visually more attractive and not seem, not seem bigger than it needs to be. And then the other thing is, whereas some other developments on the site have a gable that is oriented towards the street, we've got a gable that's oriented 90 degrees so that the lowest point of the roof is actually at the front. And that's something else that I think makes the building, you know, more at home on the street. And more, it gives it a more residential feel. So that's all I'll say about, sorry, will I add just a few things? So when it comes to site coverage, and actually, that's the next slide. I calculated impermeable surface for the existing and for the new to see how they compare. Because although the proposed building is quite a bit larger than the existing home that's there, we are covering quite a bit less with our driveway and our walkway. And our driveway is actually almost as small of a driveway as you could possibly have. And so how it ends up calculating is we are 500 square feet more impermeable surface than existing. And then that third image you see on the right-hand side is just a demonstration of something that I realized. And that's that the zoning ordinance has a little bit of a gap in that if a single-family was built on this property with a similar drive as is existing, and in all respects is otherwise code compliant, you would end up with impervious surface of significantly more than what we are proposing. And I only bring that to your attention because we have always been intent on reducing as much as possible the amount of impervious surface. And I think that is something that is demonstrated by that comparison. And then finally, the last thing I'll say about impermeable surface, because I know this is a significant concern, is that we, part of the 32% is patio. And the patio that, and you'll see this in the list of materials on, in the drawings, the patios will be permeable pavers of significant permeability. And I don't think the city now allows any sort of reduction in calculation for that. And I don't really know how that's, how that enters into your process. But I just wanted to emphasize that we are really trying to do what we can to reduce the amount of runoff that would end up in city storm and increase the amount that just filters down into the soil. So the last point I wanted to make, I don't have an image for, is just harkening back to what our goals have been. And we've really had two goals from the start. One is sustainability. And so you may remember from the previous design that there, that the south-facing gables had solar panels, and that's still part of the design. And that the structure was going to be of advanced framing, which allows reduction in material usage and increase in wall width, which means increase in insulation R factors, which means energy savings. So we're still very interested in sustainability, and that's another reason why we want to do permeable pavers. The other aspect, and really the one we're most passionate about, is creating a home that, that has a single-four living aspect to it that allows residents to age in place. And this is something that I know the city needs. And the comprehensive plan actually addresses it in what is, you know, essentially a conclusion of a discussion on the future of the city. It states, "The change in the demographic character of the city's residents will be substantial. The challenge for the city is to adapt itself as a life-cycle community to conform to the needs of the population." And that's really addressing the fact that the demographics in the city are changing and becoming an older demographic. And the fact that there is what the comprehensive plan calls as overhousing in that the housing stock is too big for the, for the new demographic. And the housing stock needs to incorporate a new kind of, allow for a way to live that the average large housing stock doesn't really accommodate at this point. And the last thing I'll say with respect to that is, I received a call a week and a half ago from a neighbor in the vicinity who saw the design. And I assumed he was calling to complain. But he was actually calling because he saw in one of the renderings the silhouette of somebody pushing a friend or family member to the front entrance in a wheelchair. And he is in that exact position right now. And he can't live in his home anymore. And he thought this offered him, you know, the exact thing he needed. He wanted to come to testify today, but his wife, who is ill, he couldn't leave her at home. So hopefully, you'll be receiving written testimony from him in the next few days. But I wanted to bring that up because I believe that it affirms both everything in the comprehensive plan and everything we've been trying to do. This is a project that I think is really a plus for the city. And although I don't know if it's really the providence of the planning commission to bring that into consideration, I do believe that the planning department and the planning commission and the city council are stewards of the city and are charged with looking after the community and making sure that what happens in it is good. And I believe that this is good. So I do offer it as consideration. And that's all. I'll answer questions if you have any at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Mortensen. Questions for Mr. Mortensen. Commissioner Carr.
I would just like to address a safety issue brought up by the engineers. And that has to do with the retaining wall, which is very deep and high. And how would you address those safety concerns?
So one of the good things about pulling the retaining wall further off of the property line is that it allows us room to landscape that strip. That landscaping will be the buffer and the protection. And this is similar to what's done in other similar conditions, including an almost identical condition in the apartment building adjacent to us. They have, they also have a drive that descends into grade, and they also have a retaining wall. And they use landscaping there for the exact same reason, except different from that is the fact that with the apartment building, they actually have a walkway that's just a few feet away from that retaining wall, whereas we'll just have this planting strip, so.
Mr. Mortensen, can you maybe use the cursor on that middle diagram to show, or if you have a better diagram to show where the area that we're talking about here?
So can I go back to the document you had open, Carrie? Sorry. Oh, here we go. Is that it? So this is the retaining wall that you're asking about. And what you see alongside it is landscaping. And I will say that I haven't brought a landscape architect on board yet, but I do intend to do so if this is approved, at which point that this will become a lot more concrete and detailed.
And do you think of some kind of attractive fence would be appropriate on top of that? I don't know, wrought iron fence or something? Because kids can crawl through bushes. I'm just addressing the safety issue right now.
And I appreciate that. And I think there's a lot of ways to ensure that it's safe. It could be a combination.
Right.
And if a fence is required, you know, we'll do a fence. But I, all I can say is, we'll do whatever is required to make sure that that is safe. But what it specifically is, I want the input of my landscape architect. And, you know, if it is a fence, I may want to still provide greenery on one side or both. So I don't know if that.
No, that answers my question. And again, I mean, I think your design is very well thought out, it's very attractive. That was my most significant concern, was the safety involved with that retaining wall. Thank you.
Other questions for Mr. Mortensen. Commissioner Shearer.
I'm less concerned, I guess, with coverage on the lot than some of the others we've reviewed due to the fact that you're next door to a large apartment building and a parking lot on one side, adjacent to a vast majority of our two units on the street, and you back up to city property. And I also, I mean, I view this as truly a transitional neighborhood. I also really appreciate some of the changes that you've made as a result of our last discussion. I think they're definitely directionally correct. They are. But I do continue to have concerns, as I have with several other properties we've looked at in the last year, about the safety concerns with the large wall. Personally, you know, if there were some sort of an attractive wrought iron fence or something that let light through, and then there were shrubs on the side abutting the other neighbor, I think both in combination could be fine. And light would allow the shrubs to grow, and it would definitely, you know, meet safety concerns that I would have on top of that. One of the things we haven't talked about at all that is in the plan, and maybe you'd like to address it, are the apartment units or whatever that are now on the lowest level.
Right.
I think we should address that here this evening.
Yes, and that was addressed in the staff report. And I think it made mention that if approval were to be granted, there ought to be a stipulation that those would not be used as apartments. And we're absolutely okay with that. The goal, the primary goal of that essentially basement space was to provide at least the possibility that, for in-home care in case the residents actually need assistance in-home. Sort of secondary to that was that, you know, we can't control who ends up living here in the case that it's a family or a couple, that this space could be some kind of rec room or workspace. But definitely not interested in it being an apartment and have no problem with stipulating so. I don't know if that.
It wouldn't be legal for four-dwelling units, so.
Right, yeah, so, so yes, that's not.
So the idea, as you propose it, is for caregivers or someone that would be of help?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Further questions? Commissioner Olson.
So have you had a chance to read the memo from the?
I did, I did. I received it this afternoon, but I was able to read it. So do you have questions about it, or do you want me to speak to it?
You know, I think they were discussing what he commented on the retaining wall, but then also the, what he was talking about, the underground parking ramp and the vigorous wall.
So I, I know that, that the other project being proposed on the street recently had issues with their drainage and drainage plan. And I have, you know, I've been holding off on engaging consultants because I'm, because of uncertainty about how the process is going to end. But I did engage a civil engineer and a landscape architect when I learned of that, just to sit down and talk with them about the viability of resolving drainage issues with my design. And I sat down with somebody from Site Civil Group who's done some work in Edina, as well as neighboring communities. And what I was told by the professional was that this is very viable, and it's not uncommon. And in addition, that there are, there are multiple solutions to figuring out how to drain the driveway and the rear patio space. So that made me feel comfortable. Of course, I don't know if that makes you feel comfortable because it's just kind of me sharing, you know, what I was told. If the, I would say if, if the plan advances to step two, that at that point, you know, I could. I could, I could, I could actually get a, an approved authorized grading and drainage plan. That would, you know, show how, how it would actually work, so.
Thank you.
Other questions? All right. Thank you, Mr. Mortensen. Don't go far. I'm sure there'll be more discussion.
Sit back there.
But I'll take the opportunity at this point to open the public hearing, unless you have something further.
No.
Okay. So this is a public hearing, and I would invite members of the public who are here and who would like to speak on this topic to come up and tell us your name and address and share your thoughts on the project.
I'm going to just put it down.
All right. Seeing no volunteers, oh, come on up. So the best is to go to one on the side podium. Those microphones work better. And just tell us your name and address and share your thoughts.
I'm Mary Quinn Levin, and I live across the street.
What's the address, Ms. Quinn?
It's 3922...
Very good. Thank you.
West 49th Street. And we are, we are in one of the single-family homes on the street. I talked, I talked to Mr. Mortensen about the project a little bit yesterday, and he was kind enough to come over and talk with us today and give us, show us the plans and give us a little bit more information. And I am impressed with the look of the, the property and the proposal. One thing that I am impressed with is that the, the front, the, the front part, the lawn does not look like some of the other, the two newer, two duplexes that have been built in the last several years have a great deal of concrete and parking and garage space right in the front. And I think his design is an, is an improvement on that. So my feeling about, I guess, is to support that and also, you know, being the fact that if this doesn't get approved in the future, somebody else might come in and have a design that wouldn't be as attractive that way. And that they might get approved because it would be a smaller overall building. So I do want to express my approval about that. And then also the sustainability factor, I'm very supportive of that too, and the solar, the solar energy concerns that he's taking into account. So I guess that's all I have to say about it. Hoping that some of our other neighbors are going to get involved too and, and share their, their ideas, whether, you know, or they, whether they have concerns that I don't have. I'm, I have probably, probably haven't thought of everything, so I appreciate your comments too. So that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Quinn Levin. I would note that we did receive a couple of email comments that are in the packet. They're dated March 29th and March 31st. I'm not sure if those are on this, Carrie, or were they on a previous iteration?
They were submitted as part of the original submittal.
Sketch plan? Okay. So they're not comments on the most recent version?
They're comments on the original plan. So it's essentially the same house. It was with the, with the front yard setback variance, with the house more in the middle of the lot, as opposed to shift it over.
Okay. But just for the record, there are a couple of comments at some point in this that are written comments. Any other comments from the public? All right. Seeing none, I take a motion to close the public hearing. And a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right. So the public hearing is closed, and we'll return the discussion to the planning commission. Comments as part of deliberation, or are there further questions for staff or the applicant? Not everyone at once. Commissioner Platter.
I'm just curious on other folks' thoughts on the, one thing I'm, I'm kind of hung up on right now is the building coverage. And I think that's kind of a slippery slope for us to grant something on that after all we've been through with the hot topics that have been before, the city and the lot coverages. I'm not opposed to an R2, that makes sense here. I'm mostly just hung up on the building coverage. And I, I like that the driveway in a way, you know, less impervious area, that's always good, but, so I'll just make those comments and listen to other folks if they have any updates. Thanks.
Commissioner Olson.
Just to follow up on that, I am concerned with that also, and with the other variances. And I think what you're trying, what you're doing here is just really honorable. And I really like how you're putting together, you know, a living space that's, you know, for as people age and accessible and the energy and all that. I just think it's wonderful. I just think it's too big. And I don't like the lot coverage too. I'm struggling with that and with the variances. So I just, it's a small lot and just don't know that it fits on that. That's what I think.
Commissioner Carr.
Well, I am not as troubled by the lot coverage as maybe some of you are. I think it is a transitional area, and it certainly is, it's a smaller lot, so it's difficult to work with. I think the design, it's very well designed. And I, with the addition of a fence and landscaping on that retaining wall, I would be in favor of it.
Commissioner Shearer.
I'm less concerned about the lot coverage too. I was actually very intrigued at the drawings that were shown of the comparison of putting a single-family home on that with larger driveway space, et cetera, compared to the amount of space that would be consumed with the property as proposed in this revised version. That's, that was a fairly compelling argument. I was already sort of disposed in that direction anyway, but it, it helped me, you know, envision this. I'm also swayed by the appearance from the street. I think this is a very neighborhood-friendly approach. The front scape does not really give the impression that there's as much space behind it as there's going to be in the development. And I continue to focus on the fact that two sides of this building are a parking, are two parking lots, one for a large apartment building and, and one for the city, which puts it in a pretty unique situation as far as I'm concerned. So I, I'm, I'm favorable at this point.
Mr. Mortensen, I had a couple of questions, if you wouldn't mind pulling your presentation up again, especially the one that had the, the row of, the data and all the lot coverage up and down the block.
Yes. Oops. This one.
Yeah. So when you did your averages, did you include 3901 in the average?
I did, right. So I don't mean to cut you off.
No, go ahead.
So there's no question that 3901 skews it in one direction, though the single-family homes also skew it in the other direction. My thought on that was that because the apartment building is actually part of the street, it's a very dominant presence on the street. Its entrance is on the street, the street, the, the steps up, the awning, the doorbells, they're all on the street. The entry to the below-grade parking is off of 49th. The entrance to the surface-level parking is off of 49th. So it just, it, it seemed wrong to exclude it simply because it was so big. So that's kind of why I ended up including it.
And these are all footprint sizes?
Yes. So then one other clarification. The footprints are based on city data, the, the drawings from the city assessor. There were a few properties that I didn't have that information on, or that there was no drawing associated with the assessor's report. And with those, and 3901 is one of these properties, with those, I just did my best fit on an aerial image. So I can't really testify to 100% accuracy with...
And then some of these, so the other end of the block has some of the larger footprints. And, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think those are also tend to be the larger total square footage. They're the two-story structures.
Right, yes, right.
Whereas some of the ones mid-block are these more kind of ranch-looking duplexes.
Yep, right. So these three on the north side and these three on the south side are very similar in character. They are, I guess technically, Ramblers, single floor. And then the ones on the north side all have drives accessing parking in the rear. And then the ones on the south side, well, similar, but with the north side, they've got under sort of basement parking. And then south side, they have grappits.
So those six are kind of the pre-existing, they haven't turned over yet.
Right. That's right. And one of them is, I, I think just as a correction, that the property of that is also up for consideration is not the, not this one adjacent to the new home, the new duplex, but it's one down from that.
All right. Thank you. If you can leave that up there then. So, I mean, to me, that's, I mean, the question really is what's the direction of the street? You know, where, where is this going to go? Because what we do here, I think, is going to have an impact on what happens with those other six properties. There's been a lot of it already on the street with duplexes that are pretty massive. I agree with what folks have said about R2 being appropriate here as, you know, as the buffer between kind of a commercial district and then more single-family, lower-density housing. And certainly this property, even though it's smaller, is next to a surface parking lot as well as what will probably be a structured parking lot behind it. And so I, I can appreciate the challenges. What I'm, what I'm wrestling with is, you know, are we comfortable with those other ones turning this direction? And I'd be interested in people's thoughts on that. Commissioner Lee.
You know, I, I agree. I think the applicant had some really very good ideas and concepts in this design. One of the things that is involved in any time that you tackle a problem, because it's a problem, it's, it's a solution to a problem, is that the program and the building really needs to react and respond to the site. And I think in this particular case, that so much, and this is where we, we talk about lot coverage, sometimes it's not just about permeable or impermeable surfaces, but it has to do with indeed what is creating the coverage. Previously, it was a driveway and a, it's, it's essentially a flat site right now. So a driveway on a flat site, it doesn't create more additional runoff, per se. It's, it, the water's going to hit and, and spread. But any time when a program starts digging under, now we're changing the contours of the land. And we tend to treat each piece of property as if the water just magically disappears at the borders and we don't, we're not concerned. But in reality, water will run to the lowest point. And I think this plan, I have some significant concerns about where that water's going. It's unfortunate that a consultant was not brought on right from the beginning, because this is a site that begs for a good civil engineer, a good grading plan, to justify that this design is merits going down a whole nother eight feet underground. And in addition, the roof pitch is so high, and as far as I can tell, that's space that's not being used. So for all the space that's, that's volume that's being done in here, it, it seems like there could be some other solutions or other ways to have addressed it. I really appreciate the thought about our comm plan, that we need to have twin homes, different types of life, at different stages of life, where people need other types of homes to move into. But I've been giving this a lot of thought. And I think that when you have twin homes, the idea isn't to build twice as much on a piece of property. I think when a person goes into a twin home, we can be creative to think about, what does that really mean? Do they still have to have the big master bedroom suite with the adjoining closet? And another bedroom? And another bedroom? And two additional bedrooms? And a dining room? And a lot of other things. I think there are some very, very sensitive solutions that need to come out of this exercise. How do you fit a new twin home on an existing twin home site? This, to me, is an R1 site. It's the smallest site on the lot, and we're just trying to put too much, I think, in this, in this plan. It's a great plan for a different site.
So let me pick up on that. So do you think the nature of the site just precludes getting a duplex on the site?
As I said, I think there are some really intriguing possibilities. It has to be sensitively done, and I think the program is what drives the volume, the square footage, the coverage. It's the program. And I think the program could be fine-tuned to say, what do we really need? How many bathrooms? What should be the relationship of the spaces? Do you enter immediately into a mudroom or a foyer? Should you enter off an underground parking space and come upstairs? The sequence of entry would drive a lot of the design and tell, dictate what it needs to be. When we, especially when we're talking about ADA accessible, that, that would say right there that you're really looking at on-grade. Anytime we start going below, now you really got to talk about elevators. In fact, I think there is an elevator in this plan. But for me, that's, there's, there's, there are other ways. We're talking about a home that is essentially on a flat site right now, and it's going to be significantly changed by this design. I do appreciate the turning, the rotation. I think that has some merit to it on a narrow site. But again, it's the site that's dictating it, trying to dictate, and it should. It's, it's an R1 site.
Mr. Mortensen, I'm sure it's in here somewhere. What is the kind of finished square footage of each, each unit?
So...
How much, I'm trying to get it, how much space we're getting?
Are you looking for like a gross square footage?
Yeah. As opposed to the footprint? I know you told us the footprint, but...
Yes, right. So for each unit, it's 2,409.
So 2,400 apiece, 4,800 total of living space on that side?
Yeah. Yeah. If I may, I'd like to address just a couple of things that were recently brought up, because there absolutely, you need to be concerned about where the water goes. One of the solutions that was talked about, which really fits in with our intent to be as sustainable as possible, is that the water from the trench drain that would be at the bottom of that drive descending into grade would empty out into a rain garden and would not, would not enter into city storm. It would just stay there until it filters into the ground or evaporates. And then the other thing I wanted to, two other things I wanted to address. One is I, I totally agree with you, Commissioner Lee, that not every home needs to have, you know, this sort of largess to it. I don't believe that this home does. I, I think we're right at the cusp of not being appropriate for the neighborhood. If we got smaller, we would lose elements that anyone who's looking for, to reside here will want. The other thing is that, you know, I really, really did try to reduce this as much as possible. I reduced it in width, I reduced it in height, and I reduced it in depth, but I couldn't get it under the 25%. And the reason I couldn't do it was because if I take any more away, we can't do single-floor living. It's, and I can walk you through the floor plan, I can, I can talk about it in detail if you're interested. Our intent is not to provide all of the amenities that have become popular or expected... Our intent is not to provide all of the amenities that have become popular or expected. Our intent really is to provide all of the necessities that somebody would require if they're in a wheelchair, so that they don't have to be going up and down. So, last thing is, with respect to the gables and the height, the height of the ridge, which is pulled off from the front of the house. The reason for those gables, in addition to, you know, helping create a more residential feel, is to provide for the, to provide for the optimum angle for solar. So, that does result in there being some, unfortunately, some unused space there. That is true, so that's, that's all.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Forrest.
Well, it's difficult for me to visualize exactly how this is going to settle into the lot as it relates to the adjacent lots. I'm wondering, Planer Teague, what is the maximum height that could be built on the property behind it, the city property?
Four stories and 48 feet.
And they are, they are actually at a lower grade, is that correct?
They're a little higher.
They're a little, I mean, this one is higher than the, the city lot's lower, okay. Because one of my questions, more than anything, versus concern was with the solar units on the, on the, on the dwelling. If our height could exceed that and then impinge on the solar, and that could become an issue for whoever builds more on the city lot than anything else. So that was my one question about that. I'm, I share, I really find the arguments very compelling that the proponent brought forward. I am somewhat torn, but part of me says that this is, I agree, it was a single, it's an R1 lot, more than anything else. And I don't think that necessarily precludes, but it may be. The situation is, we as a city need more creative housing solutions as we age. This is a situation where you could have a two-unit dwelling, but more like a, a mother-in-law apartment-type thing. You'd have separate entrances, you'd have some separate things. But maybe one is, one is more modest than the other, instead of the equal units on the property. So, I think that's, that's kind of where I'm at right now. Is I, I think there are some very good arguments the other way, and I think it fits in a lot of ways. But I'm just seeing it as, it's 36 feet tall almost, it's just two inches short of 36 feet tall. So that's a pretty tall building as well. It's kind of imposing.
Mr. Mortensen, one, sorry to keep asking, but you keep referring to single-floor living. How many square feet on that second floor? For each unit?
952 on the second floor.
For each unit? So if your $2,400, almost $1,000 are on the second floor?
Yes, that's right. Yep. So, the breakdown is, that space in the basement is 319. The first floor is 1,138, and the second floor is 952.
Okay. And was there any thought given to just doing, I mean, you've talked about the single-story living. Tell me about your thought process for why the second story, that then maybe creates some of the bulk that some folks are concerned about.
Yeah, right. So, the, the, the way we've conceived of this is that the first floor would contain, you could live only on the first floor if that is all your ability allowed for. But that, that it wasn't limited to that, and that there was space on the second floor for a guest room, or a study, or an ability to have some other space to use the house as most houses are used, with a little bit of flexibility in there. So that was, I guess, our approach.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Carr.
Again, I think if this were in any other location, I would have serious concerns about the lot coverage. But because it's surrounded by parking lots on both sides, this is a very unusual property. I don't really think single home is the right zoning for that lot. It should be R2. And given that, I think this is a good transition, going from a huge apartment building, and probably a huge parking lot, and then going from there to the rest of the R2s in the neighborhood. I think the front is very attractive, looks like a home from the front, so I think that is very attractive. But again, I think it's the unique location of this lot that makes me favor, wanting to vote again in favor of this application.
Commissioner Shear.
I concur, I continue to concur. I, while I can relate to concepts of double living doesn't have to be have all the largess. As I approach making those choices myself, I would want some of the largess. I would want room for my children to visit, I would want accessibility. I wouldn't be interested in buying something that was tiny, tiny, tiny. I think the fact that, that we think sometimes that, that it could be done that way or that that's a better model, doesn't make that the model that people want to buy. So I have sympathy for the developer in that regard, I do. I, again, I agree with Commissioner Carr. I think this is a very unique lot, in a very unique position within the city framework. Now, with regard to grading, water concerns, et cetera, I think we need conditions. We haven't seen, you know, all the appropriate studies and the required engineering reports that would be absolutely necessary before anything proceeded. But I don't have any problem with it being R2, and I don't have a problem with the general construct as revised.
Commissioner Forrest.
I don't have a problem with R2 at all, but I also don't think that because of the position of that house with whatever's behind it should be the deciding factor as far as how much it can affect the neighbors on its street that has single and double-family homes. In other words, just because it's next to that commercial area, doesn't necessarily mean we should have more largess as far as how much lot coverage, how big it is and all of that. I don't, I don't think that should be the deciding factor.
Commissioner Shear.
I personally would just state that I think in terms of its facade, it's friendlier to the neighbors than some of the other development that's been going on, on that street. It is less troubling to me than some of the other development that I've seen.
Commissioner Schroeder, you're oddly silent.
Hold on, just wait a minute. I have a question for Planer Teague. If we go to the lot coverage requirement 25%, why is that threshold at 25%? What are we, what is, what are we trying to protect? What are we trying to hedge against? What establishes 25% as the threshold for this lot in this zoning classification?
Yeah, I don't know the history behind the R2 lot coverage requirement. That's been on the books, at least as long as I've been here.
Well, I'd offer this because if you look at a lot of the other standards we're looking at variant, they are perceptual variances. You look at setbacks or building heights, those are things you can notice when you walk down the street. There's no way anyone would ever be able to see, perceive lot coverage or a variance, or be able to tell whether it's 28%, 32%, or 25%. I actually think these standards were put in place as a means of kind of red-flagging when we hit a point when drainage issues become more significant. But there are ways where you can deal with runoff issues, and I agree, Commissioner Lee, we haven't seen those in this plan yet. And I think that's the biggest concern I have right now, is that there are some concerns that have been noted by the city engineer that haven't been fairly addressed. And they do, they are caused in part by the trigger of exceeding the 25% lot coverage. I don't have an issue with 30% lot coverage. I do have an issue with not being able to deal fairly with drainage and considerations for accommodating runoff from essentially a deep part of the site, where we can't tell how water's going to get out of there. There are ways to do it, we don't know yet how it's going to be done.
Commissioner Lee.
I think, again, I know I touched on a lot of issues, but for me, it is about the drainage. And as I said, when you come in with a solution that depends upon proper drainage, that is something that I think you'd get a key player on board and have them weigh in. I was looking at the site plan. We all talk about that retaining wall in the front. There are two more retaining walls. Oh, actually, let me see, is that the previous plan or has that changed? No, revised plan. I think there's still two more retaining walls at the back, which, there is a grade level change of nine feet as it goes down. The water is going to shoot off from the back of that property line straight down into that lower level. There could be a trench drain, that's a tremendous amount of water. And if there is going to be a rain garden, I would have liked to see that. Where, where can you put that, and how do you pipe that up? Now, now you're down at the bottom, how do you pipe that up and bring that to the rain garden? So, it would have been helpful, at least that would have persuaded me. But I am not convinced that this is, you know, meriting it as far as that variance, changing it from an R1 to an R2.
Well, so I hear, I hear pretty clear concerns about the drainage from everybody, even those who are in favor of, or sympathetic to the variance. Well, so, before we go there, my, my thought on it, I, I think that this is an R2, and I think that the, that the street is going to change this way. It's going to, it's going to look much more like the newer structures than the older structures. I don't think there's any way you'll ever build a single-family home with the parking lot next to it and the parking ramp behind it. And so I think it's appropriate to have some kind of duplex. You know, I'm ambivalent about how much space on this lot, but I also think that, you know, that this needs to be a duplex. I think Mr. Mortensen has worked hard to try to figure out ways to fit it in. So if the, if the drainage could be satisfied, I think I could be supportive of it. And the question is procedurally, how to get there. I think we need to, Carrie, going back to what you originally told us about the process, we're talking about a rezoning that's a two-stage process. And your recommendation was that we, that we kind of plum this variance a little bit. And obviously, we don't want the applicant to go forward and put more time and money into this if we're not willing to grant a variance. So I suppose one way to tackle this, I think we need to split apart any motions on a variance and on the rezoning. And I guess my recommendation would be that if someone wants to make a motion on the variance with whatever conditions they think are necessary to be satisfied, so that when it comes back a second time, some of those, if, if it comes back a second time, some of those could be satisfied. So, I don't, you know, if that's, that could be...
It would be a separate vote on the rezoning and then a vote on the variance?
And then, and then if, if the variance, if it were a motion to approve a variance with conditions, then, then I think a rezoning, preliminary rezoning vote would be appropriate. If it were a motion to deny, or if the motion to approve failed, then I don't see the need to be moving forward with a rezoning vote. So, with that complex preamble, I entertain a motion if someone's got one. Unless there's further discussion, we can certainly have more discussion after the motion. Commissioner Carr.
I move approval of the variance, subject to two conditions. One is that a fence and landscaping be added to the retaining wall, subject to city engineering approval. And secondly, that a landscape and drainage plan be submitted to the city engineer as well, and that that be approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, well, there's been a motion and a second, any discussion on the motion? I guess I would go ahead, Commissioner Schroeder.
I was just going to suggest it should be not approved by the city engineer, but reviewed and found satisfactory by the city engineer and by the watershed district. They're actually, when we talk about runoff, they're going to be one of the determining factors.
That's fine with me.
Carrie, you look like you're wanting to say something.
That the, the grading, drainage, stormwater management plan be done by a professional licensed engineer.
Which is what our ordinance would require now.
It is.
You know, I, I mean, my own preference is I'd like to be, I'd like that to be part of the second time around. I mean, I'd like to make, when they come back for a final zoning, I'd like to see what the solutions are and have that explained to me in a way that satisfies me that the drainage concerns that I think have been legitimately identified here are being worked out properly.
I believe the timing can be part of the condition, can it not?
That would be another condition, a third condition, that the drainage plan and the fence both be brought to the planning commission for the rezoning.
And do we get that second step too?
We do.
Okay. All right, so... Oh, the lower level, did you want to add a condition about the lower-level apartments not being separately leased out?
Yes, and then a fourth condition would be that lower-level apartments would not be in approved use. Is that correct?
And is that okay with the secondary?
Yes.
All right. And when you, when you say apartments, you're talking about as a separate, separately leased out, kind of, right.
It can't become units three and four in the complex, right?
Further discussion on the motion? Carrie.
Just for clarification, maybe add a condition to the variance, that the variances are contingent on final rezoning of the property, so it all comes together in one package at the end.
Yes, please add that as the fifth condition.
Yes, I would concur.
Well, yeah, and I think that's, that's consistent with the discussion here, which is, we need, and Mr. Mortensen, this would be a good time to be taking notes. We need to be persuaded about the drainage. I mean, I understand that we're talking about moving forward to basically give you a green light to go further, but if it, if the drainage isn't working, you're going to find a hostile audience back here when you come back, so. All right, is there further discussion on that motion? Commissioner Lee.
I just want to make sure I understand. So, the first, what we have before us right now, we're going to, we're going to agree whether the variance...
Right, it's just on the variance for now.
Okay, and I just also want to understand that the staff has recommended that that part, the staff believed that the variances were not reasonable, is that correct? We're, we're going to go ahead and decide that part. And the second part of that would be then, tonight, to move on the zoning?
Preliminary zoning, so we would do, that would be the next motion, would be approval, preliminary approval of the zoning change.
All right, thank you.
Well, Commissioner Lee raises a fair point, that the staff report recommended against granting the variance, so... No, and I'm, and I'm fine with that, it's just, in terms of, in terms of the rationale, I mean, I guess we're incorporating the discussion here into what, I mean, ultimately, is this going to the city council?
It will.
And will the variance be part of that when it goes to the city council?
It will. So what I would do is craft a resolution, putting together some findings based on your discussion, that's going to set this site apart from others, you know, so it's not setting a precedent. This is a unique site, given its location, the small size.
And we've talked about a number of those things, the parking lot next door, the parking ramp behind, or the future potential parking ramp behind it, the, I don't know if there's other things that people wanted to highlight. Commissioner Forrest.
Just a question. Because your conclusion was different than what's being discussed here, are there any additional conditions that staff would add as well in that situation versus as you typically do with variance recommendations?
The ones I have been thinking of, I've been throwing out, so I, I wouldn't anticipate adding...
adding any other conditions to the ones that we've discussed here.
Further discussion? All right, Jackie, let's do a roll call vote on this, if you would, please.
Commissioner Shear.
Aye.
Commissioner Schroder.
Aye.
Commissioner Lee.
Nay.
Commissioner Olson.
Nay.
Nay.
Commissioner Carr.
Aye.
Commissioner Platterter.
Nay.
Commissioner Forrest.
Nay.
Chair Stoughton.
That, four to four? The beauty of having an even number of planning commissioners. All right, so that motion fails, so I would entertain, this is really going to be hard. We're just going to go around in circles, aren't we?
Does it even go on?
Well, we've talked about that, and we have, this will bore anyone watching, but we generally like to have a motion that is approved, that directs where things are going, but since it's a four to four vote, I suspect a motion to deny will result in a four to four as well. So on an even number of votes, it's, it's a little difficult to get out of that box. Had it been a five to three, I would have asked for a motion to deny, that then I assume would pass on a five to three vote, but since it's an even number, I, unless members of the commission have another suggestion, I'm not sure that we should go forward. So then the question becomes, if this is going to go on to the city council, I think the record will be clear that there was a motion with certain conditions that failed to get five votes, it got a four to four result. I think there's probably a, there would probably be a desire by the plant, by the city council to know the commission's view on the rezoning proposal. So, I think it's probably appropriate to have a motion on the rezoning, then at least they'll have both recommendations in front of them as they consider what to do next. So, somebody care to make a motion on the rezoning? Commissioner Carr.
I move adoption of the applicant's request to have this property rezoned from R1 to R2.
Is there a second?
Second.
Carrie, on this, would you, would you also suggest that this have a, you know, the reverse contingency, that the rezoning be contingent on the variance being granted?
I would.
Is that acceptable to the mover and the seconder?
Yes. I think that's true, that if we turn it into an R2 in general.
That's, the question is whether you'd be willing to rezone it, you know, if, if, I mean, I would understand if the motion is to rezone it regardless of who, but that would preclude a single-family home on this site-
It would preclude it, and if there were no conditions, somebody could build on that site and meet all of our code requirements, they'd be entitled to do that. He couldn't build the plan that's-
Right.
-that's before you.
Couldn't, you, he-
Without the variances.
Right, he'd need variances, but if he, so if we changed it to an R2 zone, or if the council changed it to an R2 zone, then it would permit a duplex on that lot, so long as there were no variances required.
Correct.
So that, I guess that's the question, as to whether you want to have that be contingent on the variance in this case being approved.
I guess for purposes of deceiving, we probably should have a contingent.
Okay, so, so the mover and the seconder have agreed to the condition that, that the preliminary rezoning be contingent on the variances being approved in this situation? Okay, is there further discussion? Commissioner Schroder.
Just kind of hypothetically, what happens if we approve this, and the variances are approved, and the developer doesn't move forward with this project? The house, single-family house stays there, now we have a non-conforming use, what implications does that have for the current property owner being in a non-conforming lot?
Excellent question. It would be, it would be non-conforming, they wouldn't be allowed to tear down and rebuild a bigger house, they could tear down and rebuild within the exact same footprint, the exact same height as they have today, but they couldn't expand that non-conforming use. So they could maintain what they have, but that would be it.
But, also, the rezoning could be, the final rezoning could be denied, if the variance isn't approved, and then you don't have the-
Well, you just rezone it back, then.
Come back for a variance?[923.82][923.82](Laughter). I like a variance to keep my air.
This is really great TV at this point.[930.13][930.13](Laughter). All right, so we have a motion and a second to rezone to an R2 on the, contingent on the variances on this matter being approved. Is there further discussion? All right, hearing none, Jackie, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Shear.
Aye.
Commissioner Schroder.
Aye.
Commissioner Lee.
Nay.
Commissioner Olson.
Aye.
Commissioner Carr.
Aye.
Commissioner Platterter.
Aye.
Commissioner Forrest.
Aye.
Chair Stoughton.
Aye.
All right, so that motion passes, so I think that concludes our work on this item. Thank you to the members of the public who commented, and thanks to the applicant for your time. This will go to the, to the city council at what meeting, Carrie?
July 15th.
At the July 15th meeting with our recommendations regarding the zoning and, and the variances, to the extent we made a recommendation. Commissioner Shear.
Mr. Mortensen, it would behoove you, just as a suggestion, to be prepared with drainage, fences, landscaping, et cetera, on July the 15th?
I did pick up on that.
Okay.[1013.23][1013.23](Laughter). Just wanted to state the obvious.
All right, very good. Next, we're moving to the section of the agenda on reports and recommendations, and item 7A is a sketch plan for 7200 France Avenue South.
Members of the commission, before you is a sketch plan review, where the commission is asked to provide a non-binding comments direction to the applicant. This site is located 7200 France Avenue, it's located down in the greater Southdale area, on the, on France Avenue, just west of, this is the Byerly's site, the existing Macy's building, Centennial Lakes to the south. The property is currently zoned planned office district, it's this orange area here, it's adjacent to high-density residential to the north, and duplexes to the west, the hatched area here. Property is guided in our comprehensive plan for office residential, it's within this area here, so the height guiding is four stories, allowed uses would be office and residential, along with retail. Here is a look at the property as it exists today, it's an existing office building, multi-story, with a large parking field in back, there's a large stand of trees here that provide a buffer to the duplexes along the cul-de-sac here, there are single-family homes to the north, and city-owned property highlighted in red here, and then the high-density to the north. What the applicant is proposing here is to tear down that existing office building and build a new multi-use, multi-family development with retail. It would be six stories in height, 80 feet tall, there's a rendering of what the site would look like. Here's France Avenue, 72nd. So there would be 170 units of multi-family, the applicant is proposing 20% of the units to be for affordable housing. Emphasize that, that's a real goal of this project, is to provide the city with, with affordable housing. Retail would be on the lower level along France Avenue, they're anticipating two restaurants, larger restaurant on the corner here, smaller restaurant on this location here, access to, there would be underground parking here, two levels of underground parking, residential access into the ramp would be off of 72nd, in this location here, access to the commercial ramp would be off of France, in this location here. There's an existing right-in, right-out configuration out there on the site today, they'd like to maintain that, that would be subject to county approval with the intensity of the uses on the site here. Couple other renderings, this is a view from France, this is that right-in drop-off area, this would be anticipated for valet-type arrangement as proposed, so this would be the public parking for the retail space. And then this is a rendering from 72nd Street. So the idea here is to have the bit lower height on the residential side, the four-story piece of the project. So to accommodate this request, there would be three amendments to the comprehensive plan, the building height from four stories to the six stories, housing density, the council just approved the housing density ranges that the planning commission recommended at your last meeting, so the maximum density here is 30 units per acre, within that office-residential designation, so this would exceed that, so we need another comprehensive plan amendment. This is 50 units per acre as proposed. And the floor area ratio, and this is probably the biggest one, the, this is zoned for office, and .5 is the requirement on the site today, so they're proposing an expansion up to 1.88, so that's pretty large, when comparison to the Lennar project, that was 1.27, and that was allowed 1.0 with the underlying zoning. So with that, if those are approved, the rezoning that would be sought here would be a planned unit development, so it would be a rezoning from planned office district to PUD. And I'll let the applicant go through some of the renderings in a little more detail. So this is the project laid out on the site, and that wooded area here would remain, it's about 60 feet in width, so it would provide that screening, that buffer to the residential area there to the west. So you can see that 60-foot setback. The building would be brought up to the street, so in comparing the underlying zoning, variances would be needed, or flexibility in the zoning through the PUD for the France Avenue setback, again, the setbacks based on the height of the building, this again would be 80 feet tall, so about 35 feet on France, 20, 25 feet on 72nd, and then the south side also would require a variance under, under the standard zoning, and again, the six stories, the floor area ratio, so that would be the flexibility that would be sought through the PUD. So issues to consider, and as the planning commission discusses this, is that density issue, and then the residential density range within the comprehensive plan, those are kind of the two, the two big issues when considering any comprehensive plan amendment. With that, I will close and stand for questions, and the applicant is here as well to present the case, the project in a little more detail than I did.
Questions for Mr. Teague. Commissioner Platterter.
Just a quick question on the FAR, in our packet it says 1.41, and here you say 1.88.
Oh, yes, yeah, the applicant submitted a revised narrative, and I apologize, so some of the numbers changed, so they're saying that the, the floor area ratio is going to be 1.88, not the 1.4, as was indicated in their original plans.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Schroder.
Just have a question about the front setback, is it in the PCD III district that we allow relaxation of the setback for a use that activates the street with pedestrian activity?
Correct.
So how does that factor in in a multi-story building? Or is it just kind of uncharted territory for us?
It is, it's zoned office now, so they're seeking that flexibility through the PUD.
All right, thank you, Carrie. Oh, Commissioner Lee.
So, it's currently zoned PCD III.
Yeah, I apologize, I noticed the graphics said PCD III, it's planned office district.
Okay, okay, and, and the, so under, where you listed city standard, are you giving us the city standards for POD?
POD, correct.
POD, okay, and the existing, the existing building that's there now, because you had mentioned that that drive is, is going to stay there, that's kind of like it is now, so it's, it's already, doesn't meet the city standards of that 80, 80-foot France front.
That little right bump in, that's correct.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, and it's a county road, so it's subject to their jurisdiction, whether they'd like to have that remain, now that'll be a discussion we have with the county.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioner Carr.
In looking at the plans, I don't know if you can address this or not, was there a sidewalk around the property that, it looked as though the, the building facing France Avenue, because of that road there, did not allow for pedestrian traffic?
Yes, they are proposing the sidewalk would come in a lot, here's that, that right-in, so the sidewalk would be located here, and proceed out that way, but, but you're right, that's, we want to maintain a sidewalk there, so it doesn't-
Doesn't appear to connect to other sidewalks that might be on France Avenue.
Thank you, Carrie. So I'll ask the applicants to come up, and in these sketch plans, we generally have a, you know, a pretty informal, interactive conversation here. I'm going to suggest for the commission and for the applicant that, that, you know, that we'd be thinking about uses, you know, are the uses that are being proposed appropriate, that we'd be thinking about density, is that appropriate? And then, what I would suggest is kind of a loosely defined site configuration, that would include, you know, the height, the setbacks, the circulation, the layout of the site, those kinds of things, so I think that'll help maybe frame the conversation. So, Mr. DeVallis, welcome.
Thank you, thank you very much, Dean DeVallis, 333 Washington Avenue North, I'm part of the developer, development team, and also we have Lori Boyclaire, Boyclaire Corporation, Adam Seraphine, NHH Property, they're, they're, they're the project sponsors. And I like to break this presentation into two pieces, one, talk about the architecture and all that, but then Lori, just to give a brief explanation of the type of affordable housing we'll be providing, because that's sort of a really important aspect of this project, because we're looking at providing basically 40 units of affordable housing-
Very good.
...within this development. So, given that, I'll give you a quick walkthrough of how this project got established. I'll see the site you're aware of on France Avenue, it's one of the last large parcels, it's, you know, almost three and a half acres is one large continuous piece, it exists as an existing office building that's partially dug into the ground, meaning you basically enter the building on the second floor, in a large surface lot, and a large buffer of trees that sit behind it. So, the geometry of the site actually has worked to our advantage, because this is one of the few sites in which we can provide 100% underground covered parking, that would make this work, which really sort of affords the development a lot of unique aspects that we couldn't otherwise have accomplished with this. And so what this shows is sort of the elements that we start to look at in terms of what this building wanted to be, and upper left was the idea they want to have some bold color movement effect in it, walls that had some grace angles, it was just a square box, when you do buildings like this, you want to have a lot of elements that scale the building, give it an interest, and give it sort of a feature, so it doesn't just read as a large six-story box on the street that has a lot of movement action to it. The idea of an interesting, upper-right architectural feature that's light, it gives an identity, a gracious entry that works off of France and then off the courtyard itself, and then townhouses that sort of have a nice residential experience to it. This is two buildings that we dine on, I show this one we did, which is Helmut and Johnson, we did a couple years ago, and that idea is that this has 100% covered parking, and the remainder of the site is green, and that's one aspect that this building will have, is that there'll be no surface lots within it, and I'll see the one at 70th and France, idea of addressing the street and creating a pedestrian environment, which I'll address the sidewalks, which is a rendering, so I'll go through that. So, this is basically our site plan right here, with townhouses along the duplexes at the rear of the site, so the building goes from three to four to six stories, the six-story part being up against the apartments, the existing office building, and along- against the apartments, the existing office building, and along France Avenue. And basically creating an interior courtyard that would serve the project also. Another aspect, and it's not cut off here, we would keep the, we'd add a sidewalk along Seventy Second. We continue the sidewalk along France. And we'd also put a sidewalk behind the senior residence to tie into Bristol Park, in which we'll do a playground, so we sort of network the existing city-owned land to give it an active use for the pledge of residence of the building, but also residents of the neighborhood, and also provide the green space here. So it's sort of a combination, trying to build a network. And the other thing, we would build an island within Seventy Second, sort of make a definition what really is project entry versus neighborhood entry. So the idea would be a green island boulevard, sort of similar, was built off of Seventieth Reconstruction, which was islands were added from the Joining Street, taking that same idea and incorporating back here to tying to the development. Then the project data is basically what Carrie covered. So out of the units, 40 would be affordable units, and there'd be 25 townhouses, 170 apartments, and approximately 26,000 square feet of retail with the project. And then parking of 577 spaces. And again, because of the nature of the site, we can afford to park it and afford to park it entirely underground. So the building itself, again, sort of talking about is that we'd have a featured corner, major outdoor dining on the northeast corner, which would be one of the restaurants, potential the second one, and then retail beginning. And then the idea that sidewalks would continue. And the idea is that the building would be carved behind, the angled facade. The roof deck element would be on the France Avenue side, so any activity that the residents would use would be oriented towards France and not towards a single-family neighborhood in the back. And as I mentioned, as you look through the building, it steps around, steps down and steps down. So the idea goes from six to four to three at the rear. So the idea is that you really trail away. The building's been shifted towards France to preserve that entire green buffer. So we're staying out of that. So basically, we're building on paved surface entirely, not building anything that's green, because you saw the site before. It was basically an office building, a large lot, and we're staying exclusively on the asphalt and the existing building and leaving that buffer intact. It's very, you get a commercial sign, which it has a buffer that's grown over the 50 years intact, so not having to create it, we're going to enhance it. And that's our, makes nice of the building. And so the basic idea is that all the commercial traffic is, Carrie was interested, is going to enter off France and exit off France. There's two plates of park underneath, and so plate number one is commercial, the lower plate is residential. So what that allows is that all the commercial traffic could only access it from France and exit, so that no commercial traffic will go down Seventy Second at all. So the more heavy demand that's related to the retail will stay exclusively on France and exit. And we want to keep this driveway, because the project will be valet, it'll be South Park also. So people come, the cars can stack off-site in front of the building and not cause any traffic congestion on France. So that's why that driveway is sort of crucial on, because it'll be able to handle the traffic and get out of the drivelines on France and allow people to come to the project, orientate themselves, and then go into the garage. And then the residential will come through the courtyard, and where Carrie mentions. And so the idea is that I keep the residential traffic, which is much lighter volume, going down that short section of Seventy Second, then in development. But then any entrance of the project will be within the courtyard, so that nothing's exposed to the perimeter of the site. Another aspect, and this is looking to view into the courtyard, is that we want to sort of create an entry of dignity and scale to it. So the idea is that, you've seen a lot of entries to apartment complexes that are low, so we're thinking of a very dynamic lobby, hotel-like two-story. If you think of the teachers' residence off of Park Avenue, it has that classic look. We sort of want to bring that same kind of effect with the project. And the idea is that the main floor on this would be all glass and be transparent, so you could see through, from France through the building into the gardens on the inside. And what we're proposing is what we call an earth roof, which is an extra deep section. I'll get it, that'll grow full, things will also be used to handle the runoff, absorb it like a big sponge, and then slowly release it into the system, which then would go into the stormwater that we can circulate back to handle the landscape. So, an aspect that's going to be built in. Again, this is a view looking north on France. And again, sort of the elements of giving the building shape and some interest on the facade. And then this is a rear view, looking at the townhouse portion. I cut away the trees, but in reality, you would not see any of the back of the building off. I purposely took the trees out here, so you can see what the building, no part of the ramp is exposed. It's all residential, like I said, all the parking sits beneath the structure. So then, here's into the site plan more specifically and the landscape. And so the idea is that this whole area would be the earth roof in green, except for the drive aisle you see right here, which allow residents to drop off guests, a couple of short-term spaces, and then enter the garage. And what I was saying, the commercial would come in this way in and down. And so, given the ratio of this, we have sort of a ratio of .55 green surface on this building landscape, and then point, I mean .55 green and a .45 building. So even though it may have a density that's a little higher than what you're used to in terms of the greenery to the site, it's a much more deal. So if you look at the Lanar proposal that, you know, sort of came through a month ago, we have 100% more green to the building because of the nature of the sign, which all our parking is underneath and there's no exposed lot at all. And we're able to do the earth roof and really develop the landscape. The other factor we're going to look at is probably because of the nature of this building, where it sits, we'll probably would do solar on the roof to cover site electrical needs, because I don't think we'll have an overshadowing problem at this section. And then now, see, like I mentioned, using this component to handle stormwater absorption and what I call a first stage of filtration with this component of the green spaces around here above the parking deck of the project. And then basically, the floor plates, as you go up, townhouses that step into the commercial here, you can see the commercial, let me go back here, which sits here, residential lobby, townhouses there and then, as I go up the floors, you just basically, the floor plates stack again in the same courtyard design. And then here is just the two ramps, large plate, there'll be structural plates that handle the earth roof above. And it's very simple, it's just two large plates of parking that work very efficiently. Again, the idea of segregation, so that this plate is only accessible to France, all my France Avenue traffic, commercial stays on France. This plate is accessible off the courtyard, which is a residential, which is a lighter use, and that's what enters through the interior of the building. So we sort of think this is a nice evolution of France. We start with that building on Seventy France, starting to address the street, trying to create a sidewalk environment, bringing sidewalk cafes, and starting to really create a more active storefront pedestrian experience, also providing housing, but also providing a affordable component, because this is a very good location for that, because you have all the services. It's not isolated. You have the bus transportation, Southdale Hospital, medical needs, and so forth. And so if you had to locate an affordable component, this area has those services, so that residents have easy access to get on all those components. I'm going to turn it over to Laurie, who will give a little bit of definition of what we mean by affordable. So Laurie, if you can come up, please. So, thank you very much. And then afterwards, we'll stand for questions.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. DeVallis.
Can I let me over there?
You can use either one.
Oh, this is good. Good evening. I'm Laurie Boyclaire, president of Boyclaire Corporation. Boyclaire Corporation has been providing affordable housing for 40 years, of which I've been a 24-year participant. With this financing structure that we are contemplating for Seventy Second and France, it would be participation in an allocation of housing revenue bonds from the city, but it would be from a state-unified pool. With those housing revenue bonds comes the rate of 4% tax credits. Those tax credits have rent restrictions and income restrictions. And with that, you are able to sell those credits to an investor who gets a dollar-for-dollar tax benefit. That is the equity that's raised to help participate in the disparity of the lower rents and your mortgage proceeds. So that's kind of the financing structure and how the affordability nature comes into play. With that, with the rent restrictions and the income restrictions, 40% of your residents, because we're taking 20% set aside at 50% median income, so 40% of the units will have an income restriction and a rent restriction. Right now, at 50% of average median income, the residents' income levels will be anywhere from $31,000 to $43,000. And that's depending upon unit type. So one-bedroom HUD figures, one and a half persons per unit, so it's about $31,000 in income. On a two-bedroom, it's three and a half people, no, it's three people per build, or per unit, and that is about, I think, I'm going to check my notes, that is 37.5 on a rental or on a income level. And then on a three-bedroom, it's four and a half people, and that's where you get to your $38,000. So that's kind of the income level of the participants in those units. I went and pulled a survey. A lot of the times when you do these applications for your credits, you have to go and get approval from the state. They have kind of a priority scoring. And in that, a lot of it's about the demographics of who your residents are. So I went and pulled out of the US, the Bureau of Labor, just an income of, and a job listing of those classifications for $18 to $25, which would be at a 60% level, and then at a 50% level, it's $15 an hour to the $21, which are the annual income levels that I just went over. It's four pages. And I went through that, and I looked, and I have a project in Bloomington. I thought, who are those people that I'm renting to that are on this page? And these are who your residents in 7200 will most likely be. They're library technicians, they're word processors and typists. I have medical secretaries, I have executive secretaries, I have most, every level of secretaries, except for medical and legal. I have painters, construction workers in my buildings that were on this list as well. I have clergy, believe it or not, that live in the buildings, that are assisted also by their denomination, but they're within that income limit. I have financial clerks, payroll clerks, tax preparers, construction and related workers. So those are the individuals who are going to be represented and residents in this building within those income levels. Again, we've been in business for 40 years. Management is critical, because when you get the allocation, you have certain guarantees to your investor who you sell those credits to, construction completion. Can you guarantee that 8609 every year wherein they get their annual credit? So that's compliance with the tenants, you know, do they income qualify? Are they not transient? Do they retain their unit for 12 months? So it's a very critical part of the whole affordable housing is that you have appropriate management. And we've been doing that for 40 years. Are there any questions?
Can you just run through me, you said 50% AMI. There was a 40% number as well. What was that?
What, there's one thing that the city just got approved in a resolution, was for the Tiff district. And that was taking the income limits from 40% of the units at 60% to 20% at 60. Now, it hasn't been cleared up, and I've got a call-in to Bill, and I also have a call-in to tax council, is the 20% at 60, the tax credit's still going to probably override that and make the income limits be at 50%. So you have two set-asides. You have 40 at 60 or 20 at 50. We've currently underwritten it at the most stringent 20 at 50.
And 20%.
Percent of the units, at 50% of AMI.
Which in this case would be 39 units, would you say?
Thirty-nine units.
Because it's 34 units for the apartment units, and then again, 20% of the 25 units total.
We probably would house all in the main building.
So all in the apartment units?
From an investor standpoint, a 20 at 80, they find it easier if it's in one building than if it's scattered, so.
All right. So 39 total units is what we're anticipating.
Correct.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Boyclaire.
Thank you.
So questions, discussion with Mr. DeVallis and Ms. Boyclaire, unless you have something further, Mr. DeVallis.
No, the only thing I would say is, you know, in summary, you know, the reason was is this is kind of a project that houses our teachers, recreation workers, nurses, things like that. And that's why I sort of thought this in part, and try to get a bigger diversity and try to sort of support a lot of people that will work in Eden, but don't have the opportunity to live. And we thought, here's an opportunity, size of project could really handle this and handle it well. So, thank you.
One other thing, too, that I failed to mention is, it also will provide for empty nesters, you know, those that are on social security, either married and/or widowed, that gives them the opportunity to transition from their current existing single-family homes into an affordability apartment dwelling living. So it also opens up that whole market for the city as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah. So questions and discussion, and again, you know, if we can make sure and just be thinking about uses, density, site configuration, and circulation. Commissioner Platter.
I just have a question on the housing, sorry.
Sorry.
Don't go far.
Stay out. Stay out. Your inform is there. So the affordable housing, exactly how does that work? When somebody applies, they would be, you know, these 39, they would only be available to people at certain income levels, and that would be part of the application?
Correct.
That would come in. So in other words, somebody at a higher level wouldn't claim these for themselves, or however you want to say that?
Correct.
I'm just trying to understand how that comes in and how you.
Well, HUD had just introduced a new program, and it's EIV a couple of years ago, which has simplified how you can income-qualify your residents. So it's less broad. But you have a compliance staff. I have a compliance director who is onsite, you know, almost, I think they hit, she probably hits all of my sites at least once a month. And then you have onsite staff who are your compliance staff. And they income-qualify, and they are in accordance to the 4350 HUD guideline. And it's a specialty niche, but you are then oversight, your oversight is then whoever is your investor limited partner, your mortgagee, so it would be HUD, and they all have their annual inspections, and they do their file inspections, they do their physical inspections. We're inspected six times a year.
So how many times a year would that person have to?
Annually.
Annually. Okay.
Yep.
So your financing mechanism, you get access to some financing you wouldn't otherwise get access to, and then as a function of that, you, they're checking to make sure that you're complying with.
Correct.
Eligibility.
Yep.
Okay. Other discussion. Commissioner Lee.
Just picking up on that topic. So you did confirm it was just strictly, is it is just based on income, right? Those are the breakdowns? Because, I mean, that's not, I know a lot of people in their twenties, late twenties, that that's their salary. So I'm just trying to get a perspective.
Correct. Yes. The only thing the program disallows from a tenant makeup is students, unless they meet certain criteria, because they're considered transient. And that would be a mother had a household with small children going back to college, or a married couple where one is working and one is working on their masters. But yes, it would be a single young professional as well.
Okay.
Architects qualify.
I didn't want to say that one, but yeah.
Sometimes more than others. Commissioner Shearer.
The row housing is rental as well, or?
Yes.
All right. And I know we had an issue with the building, I can't remember, it's probably a number of years ago, and I'm not as familiar with your work as in recent years. But as the units turn over, would we, would the owner be responsible for maintaining this kind of a percentage on an ongoing basis over time?
Yes.
Okay.
There is two guarantees. One, you have a land use restrictive covenant. So that would run with the land for a period of time. And the second is in order for you to be able to guarantee your credit or deliver your credit, you have what's called a next available unit rule. So if any unit in the entire building becomes available, and there is one that hasn't been filled with a qualified resident, you leave those all vacant until you qualify that particular unit with a qualified resident on the 50% level.
Thank you.
Commissioner Forrest.
I was looking at the square footage of the units, and I'm a little concerned, because it says the use area includes the stairs, elevators, et cetera, the gross square footage of the categories below. And it looks like the average. footage of the categories below. And it looks like the average size, including all of that possibly, for the luxury apartments is eight hundred square feet, and for the row homes, seventeen hundred square feet.
The eight hundred square feet, I'm sorry, I'm kind of buttoning in on you, but the eight hundred square feet, off the top, and I have it back, sitting right back there, though, is, is on the one, one bedrooms. So, our average square footage for the apartments is about nine hundred and forty-nine square feet, I believe. And we're still working on efficiencies.
Okay, because this is taking the number of, for all of the luxury apartments, all sizes of bedrooms, the average comes out to eight hundred?
No, we're, we're at-
Well, I mean, these are the numbers that we were provided.
Oh, yeah. No, we're, we're working on the efficiencies. And I think, right now, we're like eighty-nine percent efficient, and we're about nine hundred and forty, nine hundred and fifty square feet on an average.
And how many?
Excluding the townhomes. Those are about, I think, thirteen hundred square feet on an average.
Okay. And how many bedrooms in those? I'm just curious.
Twos and threes.
Twos and threes.
Yep.
Thanks.
Would the, the townhomes, or the envisioned to be a kind of vertical units, the three-stories each, that'd be, so enter from the courtyard side, and then, and then it goes the full vertical?
Yeah, it goes one below to screen the parking. So, it's sort of, it's sort of a wrapper. It goes two above, one below, so that that side has no, you just see townhouses and not the edge of the parking deck. The parking deck would only be open to the south, which is opposite the office building.
Okay. Commissioner Kilburg?
I just have some general comments, some concerns about the project in general concerning density and other things that we're looking at tonight. Initially, when I saw the project, I was confused why the front or the giant facade with the crown wasn't facing France Avenue and engaging that. But, I think you made, or an argument was brought up where the retail and restaurants facing France Avenue were much more important to engage that pedestrian access. So, I do, initially looking at the project, I was wondering why it wasn't rotated ninety degrees to have this beautiful front courtyard facing France Avenue showing, that you could see. But, it kind of makes sense to me now, so I believe that's-
That's a management push.
Yes.
From a resident perspective, it's by-
It helps give a little bit of segregation, because if you look at it, it's like layers add a strong wall against France, green space, and then the townhouse, then the buffer, then the twin home. So, the idea is sort of a hierarchy of density going back. And so, that's sort of why the orientation came out the way it did, trying to look at the site as stepping down uses, stepping down intensity, France being most intense, and then leased at the furthest west part of the site.
Yeah. And that was another thing I wanted to mention. I do appreciate the stepping-down effect. We do get a lot, or we've seen proposals where it doesn't step down at all, or it even goes the opposite direction. I think that this does work well. You're very lucky to have that sixty-foot buffer there. I'm glad you're keeping it. Also, to me, looking at the density and the preliminary, the preliminary plan here, the, it seems appropriate to the France Avenue corridor, and it seems appropriate to the area, regardless of the floor area ratio of the units per acre. I believe that it doesn't seem like in most projects, you can, just by looking at a plan, you can see that you're trying to cram too much onto what's proposed. So, here, I think that you're doing a good job so far balancing. I was struck with the six stories initially. It is a four-story area, but that's something else to consider as well. I think the use, we were talking about uses, I think the use is really great combined with residential luxury apartments, as well as those townhomes on the other side of the development, combined with retail, restaurant, and other uses. Again, engaging the public, making it not feel like it's a closed-off area, engaging the France Avenue corridor, and I would commend that as well. Just a note I had, I know we're gonna run into a lot of traffic problems here. I know that's gonna, we've looked at a bunch of proposals around the area. Basically, what we conclude is that this area already fails, so I, it's not gonna fail worse. But, I would just encourage some creative traffic solutions. I, I really do commend keeping the commercial traffic separate from the residential, but it still all does load mainly onto France Avenue. So, just looking to the future, I would be concerned about all the intersections at Hazelton, the intersections at Seventy Second, and then the right-in, right-out safety aspects. And I know that that's not something that is at a sketch plan review, but it is something down the road that I would be concerned with. So, those are all my comments. I would just, from first looks, I believe that the project is very acceptable, and it kind of, it, it makes me sad that I'm leaving Edina soon to go to college.
Oh.
But, maybe by the time I come back, it'll be done and ready for me to move in. I don't know. So, thank you.
Thank you. Very, very, very nice analysis. Thank you. Very thoughtful.
Commissioner Lee?
I, I found this proposal very, very interesting and exciting. I actually don't live too far from this, so I do drive by there frequently. I have a few questions. This is a sketch plan review, so we're offering, offering it up, and I know you guys listen well, so. Ben mentioned the traffic congestion. This, to me, is the first major project on the-
West side.
-west side of France that is, is trying to do this sort of residential-retail mix. What we, what we've done on the other side of France is almost had to have a separate lane for people turning into Byerly's or Whole Foods. And the reason is, the, the speed on France gets so high. Currently, that building there now, it does have that sort of main drive. And if you've ever tried to pull in there, you literally have to pull in there quickly and slam on the brakes, because cars are coming behind you so quickly, you don't have enough time to really signal that you're turning right, and more so, they don't know where you're planning on turning right. So, you kind of zip in there very quickly. So, part of me says, maybe it needs to be back a little farther to look at broadening that zone somehow on that side of France, or maybe, maybe it's a street reconfiguration, where we're gonna be adding right, right, additional right lanes for that. But, that's something to think about. That's something we gotta consider, too, because it's the first major project.
And your point was well taken on that slip lane. That was part of the issue, what you were saying. That's why we said it's something that's necessary, because your municipal staff, they talked about, do you need that? And I said, absolutely, because it creates the de-acceleration lane to get out of the France Avenue traffic. And the reason why it's so long, it's longer than what it is, for exactly the reason that you can pull in, de-accelerate, stop, or enter to the project, and then go in. And so, that was the, the idea of what that element was, to allow that kind of thing. So, you could gather the mainstream of traffic, orient to the project, and then go into the garage or wait for the valet, depending what's your preference. So, yeah, you're absolutely correct on that.
Oh, so you can get to the garage off that, that turn-in drive?
Oh, yeah. If you can pull up the site plan again, I'll, I'll show you, because that was part of the idea, is that-
That's good. I understood that the parking garage is a different driveway.
So, you see right here, you come in here, de-accelerate, either valet, and then you make a right into the garage.
Okay, okay.
So, the idea is that this is part of that. So, instead of coming in and making that sharp right in where you slow down, and you're being at risk, you come in here into what I call a slip lane, slow down, right in. Now, you're safe in the garage, and sort of get where you are. And then, the same idea, we have that going past, so you can sort of get out, give me the traffic. So, that was why this was sort of a critical piece to maintain. Obviously, we'll have to deal with Hennepin County on it, but this is something that we're gonna really be firm on. That's sort of necessary to make traffic flow work and allow people to come into the project, especially at Surges, you know, the restaurant on the corner, if there's a peak period. This allows people, again, maybe a few cars stacked, so they get out of the main drivelanes of France Avenue.
Okay. I'm glad to hear that there is thought on that, because that was a concern. What about service? How do deliveries pull in?
So, service, so, you know, short-body trucks can come to the garage. There is a service, you see right here, tucked around the corner. So, the idea is that you'd come into the courtyard and back in here. So, service is within the interior of the building. So, straight-body trucks can use the garage. If there's a semi involved, it would be right here where you see the letter service, right in that area.
So, there will be, so potential for some semis coming down Seventy Second Street?
There will be an occasion this point right here, correct. And that's one reason why this island was sort of important, to really create that designation, because the idea of trying to pull it off France is difficult. So, to make it most, work the best, we pulled it inside the courtyard. So, while there may be a semi that comes in here, any movement truck will be within the building, within the courtyard, within the landscape. So, it doesn't impact anything on Seventy Second Street at all. It's all internal within the site.
Okay. I'm, I'm also gonna play a little devil's advocate here, because it, it becomes instantly residential, once you're sort of at that island, where you're gonna create that green buffer right there.
Right there.
All of that is just single-family homes back there.
Right, actually, this is a seniors' residence.
Right.
Right about here.
Okay, that's the street.
Right about there is where the transition occurs between Sunrise Senior Center and the single-family home on this side. So, it's actually past the site.
Okay. I know there is a cul-de-sac of homes that backs up to those townhomes.
Right here, correct.
Yeah. Do you have any idea what's the distance, the minimum distance between that?
We're sixty here, and there's another sixty till you get to the houses. So, let me get to the overall plan. Let me scoot here, because this gives you a feeling. This is one of the benefits of the site.
Yep.
Sometimes you get lucky and have, there we go.
Because it's so hard to see for the trees, but I know those houses are actually tucked under.
So, if you see the houses, hear their walkout. So, our property line is sort of right in the middle of this, about where I'm taking the cursor across.
Okay.
So, then, that dense greenery goes all the way back here. So, if you go from the back of this, all the way here, it's about a hundred and twenty to a hundred and fifty feet of solid vegetation.
Okay.
And that was one reason why I really cited this and pushed it towards France, and tightened up the U, is to really leave this alone and enhance it, because, you know, a lot of times, you're creating buffers with one-year-old trees and hoping it fills in in twenty-five years. Here, we're sort of blessed with fifty, hundred years of growth, and very dense growth. That's already in place, that really, these are over-story trees. So, essentially, these trees are taller than this side of the building, because it's three stories. So, these exceed the height entirely. I did meet with one resident back here and show him the plans. He's actually one of the former planning commissioners, and he was very pleased with the layout of this building. In fact, we're keeping the trees and all this, because he'd heard about the project and-
I guess that would be a question, if, if you are, you know, notifying or working with any of the residents back there. Because I will say this, right now, granted, it's just a parking lot, but there is a difference to a homeowner when they have a band of trees, and the only thing on the other side is, is, is just a parking lot. And actually, I don't even think it's a heavily-used parking lot, so even the cars don't even come very close to their edge. So, now, there's gonna be that wall of the townhomes, and I, I just think that that's something to take into consideration, just a, could be a sensitive point.
No, it is. And that's why the townhouses went back there as the lease, and why we kept all the traffic on the other side of the townhouse, so, so that there'd be no cars at all ever going in the rear of the site at all. So, we flipped the townhouses to be on the inside of the courtyard. But, you're absolutely right on that.
Okay. And my last question, why, why five stories, or was it six stories?
Six stories.
Can you do it with four?
Uh, no. And I'll be truthful. If, and we used to say this, this is a project which I'm gonna sort of use the words as closer equilibrium, because we're a hundred percent underground parked on two levels. If to afford that, because those spaces cost between twenty, twenty, twenty to twenty-five thousand apiece, in that sort of becomes a many, because I have the earth roof on top of it, I could do less density, but I'll let them go into surface parking lot in order to, because then my density drops. You know, the cost of site is fixed, so then how do I save money if I have less density? I go back to surface parking. I may eliminate the affordable housing. So, what's sort of nice about this, the unit count that, you know, between the hundred and seventy units and the twenty-five townhouses makes this thing economically balanced, where I can still do the elements of, you know, because some of this, this thing's a little, I get here, let me get to the side, because some of this is key in making this work, which is this green earth roof, I think, is part of the pleasure of the project. And a little bit of density allows these kind of effects to occur, and allows me to get all the parking underground, where I could've gone to a surface lot solution. So, in weighing it, I thought that made sense. Another reason for six stories is that it's pretty much the height of the office building to our south, so it's not a height that's foreign to the street, because office floors are higher floor-to-floor than residential. So, it scaled, it allowed more amenities in terms of what I call the green roof, where I can do the parking, and allowed to, to create the affordable housing with the mix. So, there was sort of a good balance of density to use to site components. So, that's basically how that came out. So, it was really a combination of all those factors.
All right. I, I just have to express concern about that height. I understand that it may match potentially its neighbor, but because of the sheer volume of it, and the fact that you're on a corner like that, it, it can feel very, very massive. The distance to the street as well, for that much volume of building, it's, it's gonna be quite a presence. So, I would lean in favor of, of looking at those numbers very carefully, and seeing what can be done to bring the scale of that more in line. As I said, there is nothing quite like that on the west side of France. And we've, we've hit that mark over by South, at Southdale, but that's over by Southdale. So, this is, this is gonna be quite a change. So, that's just one suggestion. I do like how it steps back in, in the rear on the residential side. So, I guess that scale, but again, hoping that would actually be more like a three-story. I think at one point, it jumps from thirty-five to forty-six feet?
Yeah, it goes, it goes, yeah, three to four to six when it turns a corner where the apartment building is.
So, it would be nice if that three could be maintained all the way on that buffer, buffer side against the residential. So, it's, it's really just kind of playing with it a little more and tweaking that and looking at it.
And your point's also, you mean, you know, plays that scale. So, the reason why we carved the corner out and pulled it back and put a podium, there are very reasons to scale the height against France. And that's why this whole corner was removed to create the outdoor dining and length, shorten the length of the side along the south to its design and the podium, exactly what you're saying, to try to bring that scale down. So, but you're right.
Yep.
In terms of that, we need to be very careful how this gets put together.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Commissioner Platter?
I just have a couple of questions. First of all, you know, bring this back. I would show the heights of the surrounding area, too, you know, have some kind of diagram showing what those are.
Other buildings and stuff.
That'd be helpful to, for people to get a sense of that. So, can you go back to the, well, maybe this one would work. So, I have a concern coming off of France, and I know you called it a slip ramp, but I have concern how you're showing the valet there, actually. And, you know, are, are people truly decelerating enough there that, you know, people actually stop to valet? Or do you have a pedestrian car issue at that spot?
So, so, you know, and that's good. So, our sidewalk, and one of the commissioners mentioned, goes like this around and back out like this. And part of the reason was to keep all the pedestrian along the building as opposed to along France, because France is six lanes across, and actually, the side of France. So, we kept it there. The valet would be back here at the further south point. So, the idea is that you come in, so it'll be really here, it'll occur. So, you get that length of distance to be able to slow down.
Yeah, I was looking where you, you know, you had the, obviously where you show it on here. And then, what I was gonna say is-
Yeah, I'd say, yeah, it's arrow, but it's actually down here.
Is there enough room to create a buffer between those two or something? As you get down in there, you have kind of a, more of a slot for the valet versus the traffic going by?
It'll be two lanes. So, there'll be the valet anywhere you pull over, and a, and a bypass lane, if you want to go straight to the garage. Yeah, so it'll be double width in that area.
Yeah. And then, then maybe you're looking at, but that's, I'm just curious about stacking, how you're actually coming out of the garage, too?
So, out of the-
You know, you've got, you've got a lot of parks with one in and one out there. So, is that enough to come out of there? Do you need?
Yes, because I'm using the ramp out also as stacking. So, remember, I have, here, I have the length of the ramp out to stack up to here.
Right.
So, let's say there's heavy traffic and cars back up. I have this whole length to allow that to occur. So, I'm using the garage interior ramp, also the exterior, to allow that to occur.
So, this isn't paid parking, then?
No.
Okay. So, you won't have that back up. And then, on the France Avenue side, to kind of Commissioner Lee's standpoint, is, you maybe want to go back to the elevation?
Oh, okay.
On France?
Hang on a second. There we go.
You, you know, you're ways away. I, I just, when I looked at this, I thought of, you know, is there a podium height all along France somehow? And, and I don't know how many stories, what it would be, but-
There is right here. There is a podium height on France.
Well, there's, it's-
It's a one-story.
It's kind of a podium, because it doesn't really stick out that far, and it doesn't really, and where the, the five stories go up, you don't have much separation distance. And really, the, you know, a lot of the reason for the podium would be to, to, to create that separation and to pull the mass back on the site. So, I, I would be in favor of you looking for something like that. And I don't know what that does as you push around the whole site, but it seems like a lot of height right on France. Now- Now, I don't know how far it'd have to be back to make a difference, and that, I guess I would look, look back to you to look at something there, but it seems like it's too much of a wall right on France, to me at this point.
No, I can, I can play with that, and push one out and pull back.
Yeah, and I'm, I just say I'm not opposed, like, unlike maybe some people here, I'm not opposed to maybe the six stories, it's just where it's at, and how that frames up from your views from France and what you see along that corridor.
Okay, no, thank you.
And I think that was it. Thanks.
Commissioner Kerr.
Along those same lines of discussion, yet the front of it facing France is one big, huge building, and the carve-out that you did on the corner is good, but I still think it's, it's a lot of mass there, some articulation, or some architectural features that will soften it so that it's not just one long building facade.
And, and this, this is that facade, so, you know, we started to carve it back like this to start to break it up, so we are looking at that. And that's why I sort of showed those metages of buildings before, is that how to give this facade scale, and this idea of cutting the angles and breaking it up, so absolutely is what we're trying to do to break it down.
And the colors, I suppose, may do something with that as well visually.
Yeah, and with the blue, we're thinking of the same blue that's on Bloomington City Hall, and sort of, sort of pull that kind of soft colors through the project.
And what about guest parking?
So guest parking, there'll be, two places will be, guest parking will be within the garage, there'll be designated for guest parking, so there's really two, let me get to the site plan here, going the wrong way. So there's really two ways that's going to be handled. There'll be a few short-term spaces here, and maybe like fifty-minute spaces for visitors. Otherwise, long-term guest parking will be inside the garage.
Okay, so for guests that are guests of the residents...
Overnight guests, long-term guests, there'll be short-term here on the circle, but long-term will be within the garage, meaning like overnight guests, things like that.
And then bicycle racks, again, being on the Living Streets Advisory Task Force, we like to think about public bike racks and other things that make it more accessible to folks to come to the restaurants and the retail that you have there.
So there's two areas where thinking of bike racks. One, what I call the commercial bike racks, would be located along France Avenue, at the front of the project. The bike room and so forth would be located off the lobby in terms of that. So there'll really be two levels of, of what I call bike transportation within this project.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Olson.
Hi, okay, I'm going to try to follow your list, so as far as the uses, I think it's a great mix of uses. I really like the affordable housing that you're proposing, I think that's excellent. The density, I'm not struggling so much with the density here, I think it kind of works. I'm also okay with the, the six floors along France, but I also think you should maybe look at pulling, you know, doing something to break it up a little bit. As far as the site, I don't know if this is a question for you, Carrie, or, I know that they, they're going to have to perform a traffic study, but it seems like that's going to really determine a lot of the impact on this site, because just looking at, you know, France with, I lost my site plan. Along France Avenue, I, I just think that the county's going to require you with the number of, you know, cars now using the site, that you're going to have to have a turn lane and a deceleration lane. And I don't think you're going to be able to maintain what you have. I don't know if you've worked with a traffic engineer, so right there...
And, and we will be doing a traffic study, and I sort of want to get counsel, and so if they do, you know, that's, they're going to look at this and whether they require a cut further back, you know, that's the kind of stuff.
Right.
They'll have to work themselves.
Right, so I think that that might, you know, also significantly impact kind of what you're showing for the sidewalk, and I kind of, I guess I'm, kind of maybe getting to is the potential for not having that full kind of valet lane, and maybe you'll have a turn lane that would be utilized for the parking, and then you could pull, use the rest of that for the sidewalk and a better, you know, straight connectivity along France Avenue, more landscaping. I mean, I know it's there, and you want to utilize that, and I can see where it's kind of important and nice to have that in front of the restaurants and all that. But I think, once you get that traffic study, I'm also thinking you might have to have a signal there. I mean, there's the housing, I think you mentioned housing has less traffic impact than, I don't know that that's so true. But anyway, so I, I'm just wondering if there's a way that we could have this traffic study, so, or when does that come into play? Because I think that's really going to impact how this site works.
So, so, you know, this is a sketch plan review, so when we come back for the final, there'll be a full traffic study, similar engineering, all the environmental stuff, all those aspects will be spelled out in the time, at the same time we've spoken with Tannupin County and worked through all those issues. So there'll be a lot of blanks filled in, but right now, we just want to sort of get the general feel of the commission, what they thought of the project, the affordable housing components, things like that.
Understood.
And we're going to build on this from your comments and start filling in. The other thought in terms of the slip lane, what we're thinking of in this and this, was sort of go through what I call a curbless design, so the whole thing reads like a plaza, and to find a traffic lane using bollards, so it doesn't look like a street curbing gutter, but more of a plaza in which you sort of enter on both within the courtyard and on France, so it has a different effect of looking like the building has a nice podium, you know, then the base, and then the element above. So it does look like multiple traffic lanes stacked in front of the building, the idea of a plaza in which you drive on and then in, so it minimizes that impact and gets, I think, a little closer to what you're saying, of really trying to keep that connection to France Avenue.
Right. Well, and I think that as the commissioner mentioned, there's a lot of, I think, conflicts going on there with a lot of the, you've got the people coming into the parking ramp, people coming into the retail restaurants, so, and then pedestrians and bikers. So I would really focus on that and really trying to clean that up a little bit, and, and making it more pedestrian, focus on that side. Let's see, what else do I have? That was site. I guess I did circulation too. Can you just real quickly explain again where your, the access to the park is?
So, and let me get, and I may have to go to Carrie's presentation, because mine doesn't cut, but let me get to a site plan here. Uh, hang on.
Is it just to that, the cul-de-sac?
So see, so see, right here.
Yeah.
Right down here, three houses down, there's a park right where my cursor is. It's called Bristol Park. It's basically a piece of land, it's just been cut, there's nothing in it, there's no element in it. So the idea is we put a sidewalk along the rear of the Sunrise Senior and connect right here, so the beauty of the park is only three houses away, right up there. But it, right now, it's just a piece of land that's just maintained by the city, but it has no program or elements in it. So the idea is that we thought we can incorporate a children's playground here, which is sort of a residence, but also the residence here, but have that access, and it's a very nice walk, and very close, so...
So you would be, you're proposing to do a sidewalk off your property on, is it within-street right-of-way, and then?
Yep.
What about pedestrian, you know, you'd be...
So there'd be a sidewalk, you would have our island here, there'd be a sidewalk on the, on the south side, and then the sidewalk would continue along the right-of-way at the west end of the seniors' residence, and then that ties into, I think they call it Bristol Park, you know, it's an unnamed market, Bristol Avenue runs through it, so hence I'm calling it Bristol Park, and it would occur right there. So there'd be a sidewalk that would be constructed to that point.
And I, I think that's excellent, you're proposing to do that. I mean, as a PUD, if we go that direction, you know, I think that's great, that, that's one of those examples where you really are giving, and, you know, back for that. But is that something we could even condition, could, you know, it's not on the site, can we even say that he would, they'd have to do that off the property?
We could do that as part of the PUD.
All right. And then the last thing was just, I think you kept talking about that green roof, and I kind of missed that too, sorry.
So, so the idea is, and this is, goes part of the nature that you actually say, hang on, let this catch up here, I scroll a little too fast for the computer. So the idea is what, basically, it's like an earth roof, meaning it'd be a deep persection of soil on top of the parking garage, and it'll do two purposes, one, obviously, maintain the vegetation, but also work as a filtration device, so taking the stormwater, I can let it percolate through this area and a controlled flow, which one would irrigate the plantings, but also manage the site runoff, provide the greenery, and filter, it's a first stage, obviously, it'd be first stage of filtering stormwater off the site. Because right now, my site, as it is today, is about one hundred percent impervious between the parking lot and the office building. This would build that aspect into it using the deck of the parking garage, that could really be the first step of that process.
So underneath kind of that, where you're showing the, the loop, the parking, that's what you're...
Yeah, this, this area in here, correct.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner Forrest.
Okay, I had a couple of comments. One is, is as you, before you come back, it would be nice to see very specific and measurable sustainability principles.
Okay.
And it would be nice to see that they really exceed what's becoming standard in the industry, that they're innovative. I was wondering, is the location of the chillers and any noise generated by them, and how that might affect the neighbors to consider that as you get more specific in your plans? And is the park access, is that related in any way to the park dedication fee, or...
There's no park dedication fee required here, because there's no plating of the property.
Good, okay, that's why I want to double-check. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Schroder.
I, I guess, kind of, again, following through on your list, I don't have any issue with the uses, the mix of uses, although this is the first, what I would consider, major retail on the west side of France Avenue. I think there's some, there's no, I have no problem with the use being over there, but I'll come back to that in a minute. I don't have any particular issue with the density, and I really don't have any issue with the, the height of the building along France Avenue. In fact, I kind of like the way you've dealt with the podium, it's kind of carved back spaces, instead of just shifting the whole upper floor plate back. I think it's far more dynamic, and it will create a much more interesting experience along France Avenue. My bigger concern, and actually, Dean, can you go back to the, your site plan? The biggest concern I have is that any resident who's in this, if they want to go to the north, or if they have a destination to the west, they're going to be going through the neighborhood. They will not go back out to France Avenue, because you can't get north on France Avenue on Seventy-second. They will go north, maybe to Linmar, maybe back over to Hazlen, and then go north. That might happen. Or they might make a series of right turns to cross and make a U-turn at Gallagher. But more likely, they're going to go down to Seventy-second, the first major intersection is Cornelia, which puts them out to Seventy, Seventy Street in front of a school. So residents who have a direction in mind anywhere to the west, they're going to be heading through the neighborhood, and there's really no other way around that. I think from a retail perspective, it's going to be difficult for people to get in here, because you either have to make a U-turn at Seventy-second Street in that new kind of slip lane that they created, and you're not, it won't be a signalized intersection there. And then they're going to be quickly zipping across all of that traffic to get into your, the curbless driveway that you have in there. Or they're going to go up to Seventy-second and do the same thing. Anybody leaving, if they don't, if they have a northbound, they're going to try and make the same maneuver at Gallagher, which has a relatively short turn lane, which is probably mostly consumed by the development that's on the retail thing at Macy's Home Store or at the new retail, newer retail at Centennial Lakes. So the traffic movements around this whole thing are somewhat confounding, and I think from a neighborhood perspective, they're going to be particularly difficult to handle. And I don't think introducing a median on the westerly bounds of your project is going to change that pattern. And I think, while I, while I like the architecture, while I like the, the kind of urban design aspects of it, traffic is going to be a major drawback for the neighborhood, I think. And somehow, I don't know how you're going to solve that, but I think you need to be able to prove to us that it's not going to be a problem, that somehow those, however many new residents here will not be using neighborhoods past schools to get to where they, where they want to go to. While I like the notion of connecting to a park, that space on Linmar is more of a basin than a park, I don't think it's actually a city park, and it's actually depressed down, like it's a place where stormwater would run to, like, any minute this year. And I don't think it's actually a very suitable place for, for a park. Maybe someday it could be, but I, I just have a sense that that's there for a different purpose, because it does have more the shape of a basin for drawing water into it than anything else. Like I said, the architecture, the kind of urban qualities you're introducing to France Avenue, I think are well-aligned with where we're going. Access is going to be difficult. If you had to look at how you get in and out of this from France Avenue, you could look across at the new entry to Byerlees, which kind of shoots people at a right angle back in, instead of what you're doing. I don't know that it's impossible to figure out, I just think that that whole issue of getting access into and out of retail, and residents into and out of this without forcing, without having them have a desired route that leads them through the neighborhood is going to be a big issue. So when we look at traffic, it's fine to look at, like, where you get into the site. What I want to see in the traffic study is, what are the nearby uses that might be compromised by a little bit of, of additional traffic?
No, thank you. Even that, you know, back to you, that's why I try to segregate, so they didn't, you know, because what, I didn't want to just create one entrance, one egress, so I split it, because you're right, you know, how do you handle the traffic? Will there be some tenants' filter, and if there's a risk of that because of the nature of France? And, I was, but the reason why I made sure the commercial was, didn't have that opportunity, period, with this, and why we developed two entries, a garage, so the garage, like, at least can split the traffic, split the impact, diffuse it, as opposed to take it all in one master entrance, so...
But, but I think that the core issue there is that anybody wants, who wants to get to your project, has to make a U-turn and cross three lanes of traffic to get there on the retail side.
If they're coming from the south.
If they're coming from the south.
Or if they have, if they're leaving and wanting to go to the north. So, I mean...
Yeah, you have to, you'd have to do it at the lighted intersections, correct.
And you have to cross length of traffic.
Yep.
I'd echo a lot of the comments that I've heard. I'm, I'm okay with the uses and the mix of uses, I think that, that makes some sense. And the circulation things that have come up, I think, make a lot of sense, both the macro ones that Commissioner Schroder has talked about, as well as the kind of France Avenue that Commissioner Olson talked about, in terms of kind of that podium height notion, maybe there's a way, because you, I think you're going to have to deal with that, because it's such a prominent part of our comprehensive plan, this notion of podium heights and step-backs, and I get where you're kind of doing it in a creative way. I wonder if, you know, if what Commissioner Olson was talking about in terms of the slip lane and different, you know, is there an opportunity to bring even canopy-type stuff over the sidewalk that maybe even creates a more vibrant pedestrian environment? And then you're starting to create that podium look that feels like it's stepping back a little bit from where you first encounter it. So I think there's been a lot of good comments on that, and, and the, I guess if you could go back to the site plan, one question I had was on the townhomes. Can you just kind of give me...
Hang on, I gotta be very, this is very sensitive.
Computer speed isn't as fast as your fingers.
Exactly, I gotta crawl my way through this, so... There, was me, am I going the wrong way? Yes, of course, hang on.
Yeah, so right here, so can you just, on the, the left-hand side of the drawing here, can you just walk me through where it's three stories and where it's four stories?
So it's three here, then this is four, and then this is six.
Okay, so where that little double line is, is four.
Yeah, so three, four, and then right from here where it says amenity, six.
Okay. So the, I'm not, I'm not alarmed by the height per se, although I will say that, you know, in the comprehensive plan discussions, you know, there was a lot of kind of thinking about the core of Southdale, and then as you descend on the shoulders, if you will, on Xerxes and France, that coming down to four stories. So I think that four-story was a pretty deliberate deal, and if we're going to go to six stories along here, the notion of going to six stories along that whole shoulder, I'm not so sure is, is going to work. The bigger question for me is the density question, and it isn't so much that I'm necessarily opposed to it, but at our last meeting, we had a discussion about density, and we changed, we made some changes to the comprehensive plan that were kind of housekeeping, and we were, we were wandering our way into a more comprehensive discussion of density, and we kind of realized we didn't have much data to go on to figure out what's the right density and what, what can this handle. So we're all kind of operating on our intuition here about density, and, you know, there's going to be three or four apartment buildings right across... going to be three or four apartment buildings right across the street at Byerly's, and of course, on the other side as well. And I just think at some point, we're going to have to figure out, and it's the density version of the traffic discussion, is kind of, what can it really handle this kind of density here? And then what does that save for the rest of that shoulder corridor as you go north, mostly, maybe south a little bit, along that France Avenue corridor? And so I'm, I'm not, I guess, the way I would put it is, I'm not necessarily opposed to it, but I think we're going to have to have some way of thinking about the density in a larger structure that satisfies us that we can handle this from a traffic, from a, you know, all the infrastructure kinds of things. We have to think about it in a more kind of global way than this.
No, thank you.
And I understand, and I understand and appreciate the Rubik's Cube you're dealing with on the affordable housing and how to put this all together in a way that works. And I echo the comments about, I think it's great that you're making that work, and that affordable housing is something that we keep asking for in PUDs, and so to get somebody who's stepping forward to say that is a really positive thing.
Well, thank you. And, you know, the density, and that's one reason why we went to the idea of taking a parking 100% below gray to reduce the effect of density visually, you know, referring to the home, single-family, or two-in-home you were talking about before, about, when the, Commissioner made a comment about visual density. If the site is surrounded by green, it helps scale it as opposed to parking lots, so, you know, I'm trying to wrestle with that and try to get a good balance that gives you that kind of look. So, you know, where you can have less density, but it's a parking lot all around it, it'll appear dense because it's all hard surfaces you're dealing with. So, you know, this is sort of kind of the hybrid we're trying to get at, you know, what I almost call a green density. That's not, you know, because density doesn't measure green space, so is there sort of a hybrid that comes into this that gives you a visual look of less dense numbers by the nature of the site plan?
And so some of that, I think, is the height, the podium, those kinds of things from the visual perception part, but I'm also talking about the just, the mechanics of this much more use in that space, and whether we're going to be able to do it, and having some data-based way of kind of reassuring people that it can work.
Thank you.
Other comments, thoughts? All right, well, you feel like you got some good feedback here?
No, I appreciate it.
All right, well, it's.
Thank you for your help.
It's an ambitious project, and we appreciate all the effort you've put into it and coming at a sketch plan to talk to us while it's still malleable.
Thanks again for all your thoughts.
All right, thank you. All right, the next item on our agenda is a sketch plan for 4121 West 50th Street.
Okay, thank you, Chair, members of the commission. Another sketch plan review. This site is located up in the 50th and France area, specifically the southeast corner of Indianola and 50th. This is aerial of the, it's the existing apartment building located on 50th. This is the three-story multifamily Halifax and 50th. The site is guided in our comprehensive plan as mixed-use center. The MXC district is shown here. It's located in an area that we've designated as a potential area of change, so anytime a rezoning is proposed, which is what the applicant is going to be seeking here, the city council has to consider whether a small-area plan is necessary for the area. This is a look at the existing apartment building. There are nine units in there today. It was recently remodeled a number of years ago. Just quick floor plates, the basement level has a couple of units. The first floor has four units, and second floor originally was four units, but two have been combined, so nine units total. What the applicant would like to do here is remodel that second floor into office space. So it would go from nine units total to six units with just over 4,000 square feet of office space up on that upper level. So the site was guided mixed-use, office residential being a use that is allowed within the comprehensive plan. We don't have a zoning district, other than planned commercial district, that would allow those two uses. Currently, the site is zoned PRD4, Planned Residential District. So what the applicant would seek in order to accomplish those two uses would be rezoning to PUD, where we could write a zoning ordinance specific to that site. One concern would be in terms of the parking, that they would be quite a bit short-parked. So we'd have to take a look at parking in the area, parking study. One item of note is the applicant does own the property to the south. There's a little ball field here. It is private land. It's used by a lot of the neighborhood kids. This could be proof of parking. It's based on the code requirements, they would need 25 surface and eight enclosed, and there's currently nine enclosed and 11 surface, so they would be short. But there is the potential there to the south. So with that, again, they would be requiring or requesting rezoning from PRD4 to PUD. And so some of the issues that you might want to consider, first, is a small-area plan necessary, as suggested in the comprehensive plan, when any rezoning is considered? So you could provide a recommendation to the city council as to whether that would be necessary? And then are these uses compatible in the area, and would PUD be appropriate? With that, I can stand for any questions.
Thank you, Carrie. Questions for Mr. Teague? Commissioner Olson.
Just a quick one. It sounds like the uses are already there. There's already offices on the second floor.
Yeah, it came to staff's attention a number of years ago through a complaint, and it was questionable whether it was being utilized for an office. They would like to do that. This would formalize that, but it's not zoned for that use.
That's kind of an existing use, I mean, not conforming, but it's already being used.
They can't, they're not supposed to be using that for office space.
Okay. Right, I understand, but it's there.
Commissioner Carr.
Since there are homes or apartments below the offices, is there any need to do any sound dampening or do something to prevent noise from going to the lower apartments? Or is that something they intend to do?
That, we haven't discussed that with the applicant, but that might be something that we want to consider.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you, Carrie. I'd ask the applicant to come forward, introduce yourself, and share a little bit about what you're thinking. So if you have something you want to show us on an overhead, do that. Otherwise, do the side podium.
Step over here.
Very good.
A little used podium this evening. My name is Matt Duffy. I represent the applicant in this proposed sketch plan.
Mr. Duffy, if I can interrupt you, I know you and I walked in here together three hours ago, so I'm sorry about the short straw that you got, but I appreciate your patience and sticking with us.
I appreciate your sympathy, but I sympathize with all of you as well.
Fair enough.
The proposer wanted me to, he is at an event tonight for the Minneapolis Crisis Nursery, wanted me to express his regret for not being here in person to address, to address all of you this evening. So as has been indicated, the plan is to essentially remodel what has been used as a gathering space. There is an office up there, to Commissioner Olson's point earlier. It has been primarily used for the leasing and management function of the building. He does meet there from time to time with prospective tenants. This building is largely used for temporary housing, for area residents, specifically ones that are remodeling their homes, specifically Dino residents remodeling their homes. Some executive transfers that are looking for homes in the area have also been known to lease the space. And actually, there is only one unit in the basement. There's two PID numbers, but the one unit is, there's no egress window, so it's not used as a residential unit right now. I think it's used as a gym in a laundry room facility for the building itself. But the lower unit of the building, the one that does have egress, was remodeled to accommodate wheelchair accessibility use. It was remodeled specifically to help, or to accommodate, a family who is renovating their home to accommodate some accessibility needs for a son that was injured in a sports-related incident. So that has been remodeled. It is compliant for those types of uses, and that is what it has been used for and can be used for. And the Commissioner's car question about whether there's insulation, I know the whole building, all of the units have been re-insulated, spray foam, I'm told, was used because of the sound, the dening quality of it, and the ceilings themselves were specifically to address that concern, were also insulated to address that concern. I think another way that that concern could be addressed is the use that will coincide with when the residents are at work. This spot will be, the second-floor office space would be utilized during that time. It is, the proposed use is an institutional investment office, meaning there is no commercial retail traffic to it. It is primarily a strictly office function. It is phones, it is email, it is desks, it is those kinds of uses that the applicant is proposing to do here. And like I said, the remodeling, or the information that was provided in your packet also highlights that any remodeling will be interior-only. There will be no exterior changes to the building, and the building itself will maintain its residential feel and the look and feel that it currently has. So I'd be happy to entertain any questions that any of the commission has.
Commissioner Sherr.
I'm now a little confused about the number of units in the building, based on your comment about the lower level. So how many units, after it's been remodeled, would you be proposing that there would be in the building?
I think, after it's remodeled, right now, there's eight, so there would be six. My understanding is six. I can double-check that for you, but I will email Mr. Teague with that exact number.
And I think that would affect the parking requirement a bit.
It would, not by much, but just one unit less.
Okay, thank you.
And if I may, just one more second. To address the parking question, yes, we, there has been discussion about the lot that's adjacent to the building, but behind the building, that's currently used as a T-ball field by neighborhood kids, and it's kind of a green space that the owner prefers to keep for the near term, certainly for the foreseeable future, will be used as green space. That's been talked about as being potential parking spots there. The applicant here has proposed using sort of a permeable paver situation, so that there's no large-scale runoff from any hard surface. It would be more of a paver situation. Also, he has discussed potentially leasing spots from this church across the street. There's been some discussion of that. I know the city was looking at that for some restriping or some maintenance they were doing on some of their parking facilities in 50th and France area, which is where he got the idea to approach the church about. So just to address some of the parking concerns right off the bat.
Commissioner Platter.
I would like to, you know, if you can cross-share with the church, that'd be great because that's already paved over there versus paving over another area such as the ballpark. I did have a question, though, in this, and just because you say there's no work done to the outside of the project, so if you make that an office area, would they have to install an elevator to get people up there? And when I asked that, is, would it go inside? Would it disrupt the apartments? And I don't know exactly if this would need it, but most of these places would need ADA access. I'm just curious if that had been worked through, or is that something that, you know, you'd have an issue with, if you'd have to put on the outside of the building or something?
That is a question based on the fact, you know, as you know, it's in the sketch plan review, and obviously, that any remodeling would have to take that into account. We would discuss it with an architect, find out if that's something that would have to occur at this point. It's not, what we've seen so far is we don't think that would be an issue, the elevator, because of the office use that will, the proposed office use is implies. But if it comes out that that is, then we'll need to figure out if, A, we can accommodate it, first of all, B, if it can be economically feasible to do that. And to see whether or not it impacts any of the residential units. That's kind of the next step in the process here, is to kind of figure out those types of details down the road. And that's something that the applicant is sort of eager, was feeling it out, and as was indicated before, the city has, he'd worked with the city previously on a complaint that was received, and so he wants to make sure he's in full compliance with everything that the city expects from him.
Yeah, having said all that, this makes sense to me, I just, that piece of it, and, you know, I guess that's yours to figure out, but I just, you know, if that does create other issues also, I was just bringing that up.
Absolutely. Thank you for your comment.
So my concern is, well, a couple of things. One, while I kind of get the change in use, the change in use, it is introducing a new dynamic in what is really, you know, very, it's certainly closer to a single-family neighborhood, and I think that there's going to be a lot of concern about that. And so it's partly from the use perspective, but I think the way that the neighborhood would feel that is probably, you know, in a typical office use on a smaller scale like this, is probably the parking, you know, that there's going to be more cars, they're going to be parked there. And I think that might change a bit of the character about this. And I have to say, I'm kind of, I'm nervous about the notion of introducing a formal permitted office use in this location. Now, I suppose if you look directly across the street, that's where the, that's the parking lot and the US Bank building, right? Which may well turn over as well with more office use. So I'm not saying that it's not possible, but I actually, as I look at this and see that it's an area of potential change, in some ways, a small-area plan for this makes a lot of sense to me. And that doesn't have to be a really long and involved process, but my antenna are telling me that you're going to want to engage the neighborhood on this kind of discussion because I think you want to figure out where the line is, where the single-family ends and where this kind of more mixed begins. And it may well permit this, just like across the street where there's kind of a commercial use, it may permit that. But my suspicion is that the single-family neighbors around it are going to have anxiety about kind of mission creep of the commercial area bleeding into that, into that residential area. So I kind of, you know, as I look at the property and I think about what's across the street and the higher-density residential use that's to the east, I'm not categorically opposed to it, but I think there's some work to be done in engaging the neighbors in figuring out how it all fits together and where the lines are between this and what goes from there.
Yeah, I agree. I think he's done, he has reached out to several of the neighbors that are immediately adjacent to the building and discussed the potential of the proposed plan. I know he has circulated what we sent to staff, to some of the neighbors, because they asked for it, and he is definitely, the applicant is definitely interested in engaging the neighbors in a discussion specifically addressed to questions you had. And there was, he did, in fact, approach the people who are at the US Bank building, I think it's the property management company, or it could be the owner of the building because he knows people that work there, and asked specifically about spots in that lot. But those are largely taken out by one of the tenants in the building over there. But there is some potential turnover in the future that was identified by the management company or the owner themselves, and then there might be some spots available for him to lease. So he is actively trying to figure out, you know, because one of the concern, or I guess one of the issues that was mentioned to him was specifically the parking that you had mentioned. And opening up a can of worms, so to speak. So he is actively trying to resolve any issue or any concern that people have going forward proactively, so that we're not sitting here a month, three months, six months from now doing this dance, so.
And for your information, we've been, you know, we're kind of constantly tinkering with this small-area planning tool. with this small-area planning tool. We, you know, it depends on kind of the circumstance, and bigger areas require more, times smaller areas, not necessarily. And we're in the process of beginning a process down at the Valley View-Wooddale area. But this is an even smaller, I don't know, I mean, it did, but that is something I think that you would find us receptive to engaging and making sure that other business owners and property owners and residents in the area are all kind of engaged in figuring that out.
Certainly.
Commissioner Schroder.
I think I would take a little different stance. I do see it as an introduction of a new or different use, even though it does kind of exist in kind of an ad hoc way today. But the way I would contrast it with what's happening to the north is that this uses Indianola, which is clearly a residential street for access. And I would hate to see that be a precedent for drawing commercial uses into that neighborhood to the south, just as I would hate to see that happening along Maple to the north. The properties to the north access them, are accessed off of 50th or another street that serves a commercial use. Indianola isn't commercial. It's a residential, neighborhood-scaled street. And even though we're talking about a relatively small office use, it's still an office use with a different kind of pattern, a different kind of user than somebody who would be using Indianola to get to or from their home. And I think that's the major thing. I look at this. I don't see it as being compatible with the nature of Indianola.
I have a few questions. First of all, why now? Why now? Why are you seeking a PUD now, when the office has been there for at least four years?
The difference is, is that now the applicant has run, when he left his former employer, he had a non-compete that he needed to serve out, and he wasn't, he was, you know, any use that it was undergoing was first personally used. Now, he's got an opportunity where he's going to be investing other, could potentially, well, he is investing other people's money in doing it on an institutional basis. So the scale of his business is changing to a degree that requires a staff, and that's the reason. He's, you know, so he's now in the business, now he can be back into what he was doing for his former employer, now he's going to be doing it for third parties. So that's the reason now, is because the scale, he needs the scale to, in order to compete on an institutional level.
Is this for OSP LLC? Is that the tenant, or?
I'm sorry.
OSP, is that the tenant?
It's for, yeah, it's the Orion Staley entity, yes. He, the non-compete expired at the end of May. He has been gearing up to do his institutional business from other locations, and he's been trying to, he's been searching for office space to accommodate this new scale. And he lives in a neighborhood, he owns the building already, there's a large gathering space and office already up on there, up on that second floor, which is what intrigued him. And he was looking in the 50th and France area specifically for something like this, because he is a resident of that area. So his interest is drawn to that area, and he couldn't find what he was looking for, and then figured that he would approach and do a formal request of the commission and ultimately the city council to formalize that and to increase the scale of the business that he's working in.
Okay, I'll be very candid. It was my name on that complaint. And, but it wasn't so much a complaint at the time, it was more of a query, because I was on the zoning board of appeals panel when the remodeling came before us and needed setback variances. So it was made very clear at that point that it was to be remodeled and used as an apartment building, period. And that was emphasized several times during the presentation, and a whole discussion about maintaining that area, that particular location as residential. And so when I asked about it, you know, Carrie said, "Well, do you want to have a complaint?" I said, "Well, if that's all you need to do to find out, okay, I'll do that." So basically, that's where that was. But I've been concerned, and the reason I asked about it in the first place, is because after the remodeling, it was clear the building was empty for months and months and months. And there may be some activity in what looked like an office, but other than that, it was dead. It's, the windows are black at night, there's no cars there during the day even, there's no residential activity. It's not contributing to the liveliness of, it may be quiet, may not be bothering anybody, but it's not really contributing to the liveliness of the neighborhood. The, so that's been, that's been a great concern for me. Also, it's zoned residential, and it's being used primarily as office. How many times has it been rented, have units been rented?
Well, the five of the units are rented currently. The two on the second floor are not right now. They were actually, one of them was damaged by a resident who'd left, and so it required a little bit of work to get it back up to par. That work is ongoing, and as I understand it, will be completed shortly. But those two units are the only two units in the building that have not, that are not currently rented.
I mean occupied. Rented and occupied are two different things. So there are five units that are occupied now?
Well, there, yeah, there are the four on the main floor.
Because there's never any lights on, let's put it that way.
Well, you know, and I guess, you know, I know that my, the five that I'm aware of is the ground-floor one that's accessible from the rear, it's the egress to the rear of the building, and then the four on the first floor are all rented.
Okay. Because, and then how many are for greater than 12 months? As she said, you know, they, in the line of business for that other building, you know, that's part of the application process, or the dealing with syndicated credits or something, is to verify that, you know, that people are leasing for more than 12 months, or else it's, that they aren't, quote, as she said, "transient." So how many of those, you know, how often are these things leased for more than 12 months?
You know, I'd have to ask the applicant for sure for that number, but I'll be happy to email Mr. Teague with that number. There aren't any, I mean, the situation is that these units aren't limited to a certain, less than 12-month duration. People can rent them for short-term, they can rent them for long-term. It's just, so far, has been the nature of the building because of the reputation that it has for housing people specifically for executive transfers or for remodeling purposes. That's just sort of what it's, that's just...
So it's not a classic apartment building so much, right?
Well, I mean, I guess it could be. It just depends on, it depends on the nature of the person who wants to lease it. I mean, I'm sure he would take a lease E that was there for more than 12 months. It just hasn't been the nature of the building to date.
Okay. With a PUD, we'd like to see some significant merits to the city. And I'm wondering, we want to get something in return. So what is it that we would get in return?
Well, again, you know, he's, the green space behind the building is, right now, is owned as an R1, I believe, and it is, you know, it could be potentially built as a single-family residence. I mean, there's that whole street on Indianola has been undergoing quite the transformation over the last probably year, maybe two years, where significant renovations have occurred to the homes and things on that street. So that lot, right now, is currently vacant. Like I said, for the foreseeable future, the applicant sees that as it's used. In fact, he just resurfaced the ball field and re, I think either seeded or sotted, I'll say seeded, to be on the safe side. The field itself, because there was some damage done to it, I believe, from the irrigation that was put in it. And so he did do that. So he is interested in potentially keeping that as green space. One of the parking solutions was if he was thinking out loud about potentially doing a, if there was a, some sort of structure out there for parking underneath, be it, you know, I don't know, what do you call them? A garage, not a garage, but a, it's escaping me right now, you pull underneath. But he was, talking about putting a solar panel on it, because he's intrigued by the sustainability of the design of the building, and he wants to keep furthering that. So he would be willing to do that from an entry standpoint. As far as the city is concerned, I think the primary chip, I guess, would be the keeping, maintaining the green space behind the building for neighborhood use. If that's something the city is interested in, I don't, I mean, I don't want to speak out of turn, obviously, but, and, I mean, I guess I'm, we're open to some creative ideas as to what the city is seeking. And the applicant is definitely open to the ideas of people that are far more creative than we are.
Well, here's my concern, quite frankly. I see it as a very creative end run around the prohibition against use variances in our state statutes. And they've been using it in a way that isn't allowed, allowed under our state statute. Now, the building has apartments in it, but you talked about the property ID, number classifications, and each, it must have been a condominium at one time, probably right before I moved here. And each of those units and each garage has its own PID. Now, that one unit is, has not been used as an apartment at all. So independently, it's in violation of the use that's allowed in that, in that building, or in that unit. Because on our tax records, it's an apartment. It's not, it's on its own, it's an apartment. And because of the value of the apartment that's over $150,000, the property class rate that's applied is not 1.25 like it is for apartments, but it's 2. So the taxes are even affected negatively, and that they aren't being, you talk about wanting to, he wants to comply with all the rules. Well, that's not necessarily his fault. I mean, there's an assessor process and all of that that determines these numbers. But right now, even that's being affected negatively. My big concern, though, is that, isn't so much the compliance issue or anything like that, but the fact that I don't see real specific benefits to the city yet. And I've seen this building look absolutely dead for years, and it's bothersome, because when I moved into the area and I live near there, one thing neighbors said to me repeatedly was that they were very concerned about this, you know, 50th and France creeping its way down 50th Street into the residential areas. So that had been, at least at that time, a very real concern. And then another thing that I'm a little worried about is, is right now, you're talking about a very time-of-day-specific business, without clients visiting and things like that. But what happens if he sells the building? How specific are you willing to let the PUD be, that if you sell that building, you can only use it for financial investment, or you can only use it in a situation where you do not ever have any clients coming there for meetings or, you know, as well? And what if we wanted to tie that green space benefit into the PUD? I mean, this can get pretty, you know, we can really, the whole point of it is to be able to negotiate between the municipality and the individual seeking it. So that's something just to keep in mind. I'm, so right now, I'm very opposed. I will say, I will keep an open mind if this comes back to us. I mean, one thing that did bother me was in the applicant narrative. Half of it was about the applicant and his wife, and I, I agree. I think they're very accomplished and generous people, but to me, that doesn't speak to the merits of the PUD. But it more speaks to, I should get my way because of who I am. And I'm concerned about that, because he's asking for something that's very personal and very personally beneficial versus, you know, something that's, you know, making this application for the greater good of the community. Even though I do agree, I think they're very generous to the community in many ways. I'm not, I'm not quibbling with personality or anything, because I don't know them, but my presumption, based on everything, including the narrative, is that they are. So I will, as this comes back to us then, for the preliminary and final development plans, I will keep an open mind, because it's a public hearing, and that's the whole point. But I would like to see some progress along, you know, to address some of these concerns, too. So that's my candid moment. Thanks for the time.
If you, just indulge me for a moment. Just so I specifically, I see you're just, you're looking for a community benefit, a community benefit in addition to the other things, right? I might, I don't want to put a fine point on it.
You can see that in our PUD ordinance, too, what we're looking for, so.
And I'm just trying to make sure that we are hitting on all cylinders when we come back, and certainly.
But basically, I don't like commercial there, and I don't like the building being as dead as it is, because it's really, it looks like a closed-up office building at night. So that's my, my take on that. And also, I think, we should straighten out the property.
Carrie, is there a way to do this without a PUD?
I don't believe so, because the use as an office in a PRD for zoning is not allowed.
But is there a zone that we have that allows?
Oh, oh, two.
So we don't have to rezone to PUD? We could rezone to...
Now, the only use, the only district that allows both residential and an office would be a commercial district, PCD, and I'm not sure we want to go there, because that's retail also.
Well, the office residential is a comp plan.
That is a comp plan designation.
It's not a zoning.
Right.
All right. Well, I mean, I do think that Commissioner Forrest's point about the PUD is, you know, we're using, although we've talked about the appropriate eligible parcels for it, and we have some disagreement on that. It generally ends up being larger-scale projects, but maybe it'd be, maybe it would work in this situation. But I do think you'd probably have to address some of Commissioner Forrest's points about what's the, what's the benefit to the community in exchange for relaxing some of those standards.
Certainly.
Okay. Any other comments on this, on the sketch plan? Well, thank you for your patience and for staying with us. We appreciate it, and take those comments under advisement. Are you, I assume, this is going to go to the council?
Yeah, this will be July 15th also.
Good. Well, we certainly recommend that they, getting their input is valuable as well.
Okay. Well, thank you for your time. I appreciate it. While you, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Duffy.
Yep.
All right. So that concludes the sketch plans. The next item up on the agenda is the lighting ordinance. Carrie, you want to give us an introduction of that?
Yeah, this is, yep, just kind of an introduction. This is on our work plan. We've talked about tackling this issue for quite some time. So what's included in your packet is just some background, how other cities regulate the lighting. And there's also, on the second page, a comparison of all those cities, kind of a summary of all the ordinances. And as demonstrated, you see that Edina's, for our site plan reviews and our commercial sites, we allow an awful lot of light to be put on to properties comparatively. Yeah, really, nobody compares to us. When you look at that.
Especially on the commercial.
Yes. So it's something we've known for quite some time. Even the proposals that come in, we don't see anybody approaching what our code would allow, which is a good thing. But we should probably align our ordinances to more what's really happening out there. And so there's also an ordinance amendment that's attached to that that suggests bringing down our standards. So it, kind of simply, the foot candle measurement at a residential lot line when compared to, or residential about in commercial, we allow up to three-foot candles, and we're suggesting a .5-foot candle amendment. And then for commercial to commercial, we allow up to 10-foot candles, and we're suggesting taking that down to one-foot candle. And that's more in line with some of these other communities. With that, we just throw it out for introduction and discussion. If there's any additional information that you'd be looking for, I can bring that information back. Or if this looks good, we can talk about a future public hearing and moving this forward.
How does this get enforced?
For commercial projects, they'll submit a lighting plan, and it'll shoot, it'll indicate what the...
Yeah, I've seen the, but how about on the back end?
On the back end, if we get a complaint.
We walk around with a light meter?
Yes.
So there is a tool that can measure this?
There is a tool, yep. We go out and stand on the lot line and measure it up.
At a particular time of night, or on a really dark night, or with a moon, or no moon?
When I've done it in the past, it's been following a planning commission or city council meeting.
Very good, very good. Well, that would be dark enough, if tonight's any indication. Commissioner Olson.
Thanks. So when somebody does come in and wants a higher candle, then do we, does it go through the variance, then?
It would, if someone wanted one, something brighter, yep.
Okay.
Commissioner Kilbert.
Do you know the highest candle that we have in the city of Edina right now? Just for reference?
Yeah.
Like, is it really bright and Galleria, and you can say, "Oh, yeah, it is bright there," or is it, is it like at one?
Boy, I don't know.
I can tell you.
Oh, really?
Because I've actually gone out and measured. If you go to like, right below a light in a parking lot, like at Target, you hit about 10. If you walk around places, Centennial Lakes, you get down to like 1, to even half a foot candle. If you go to a convenience store, you're brighter than operating rooms. You're probably at 115-foot candles. And they needed that 10 years ago because of the way security cameras worked. So they would overlight those, the underside of the canopies at convenience stores. So they would overlight those, the underside of the canopies at convenience stores.
So is there an existing condition that would be like above one foot candle that we would make non-complying at the, at their lot line?
Yeah, boy, you know, once this is put into place and we get a complaint and I would go out and measure and they exceed this, because lighting is always being changed out, I, I think we could enforce these regu, these regulations.
So we, we would then go back and say, even though, and for the past 100 years, you've been at 30, I don't know, something really bright?
Yeah, they would have to demonstrate to me that they've been at that.
But only when there's a complaint. We would not proactively run around.
Correct.
We wouldn't assign the task force to tell everyone to turn their lights off. Yeah.
Well, how about on the, on the residential side? You know, there's, there's lots of folks who, you know, do lighting on their house, uplighting, tree lighting, other kind of.
Motion lighting?
Motion, yeah. I mean, how does that?
The types of complaints we get on residential, it's usually an exposed bulb that's pointing right at a neighbor's property.
It's like a, a motion triggered light over a garage that shines straight across the street into the.
Yep. So we would go out and observe that. And if it's pretty clear, we just work with the residents, they'll put up some kind of a shield or diffuse it.
Commissioner Carr.
In looking at what some of the other cities have done, well, first of all, I had a question. City of Minneapolis, they have the language in their ordinance that says lighting fixtures have to be arranged so that the glare is not in excess of a half of, one half of a foot candle, et cetera. They also have something that's lighting fixtures shall not exceed 2,000 lumens, equivalent to 150 watt incandescent bulb, less of a cutoff type that shields the light source. Do you have any, I, I, I'm afraid I'm not very expert in this area. What's the difference between lumens and foot candle? Does anyone, can anyone help answer that question?
It actually gets quite confusing because there's a lot of different ways to measure foot candles. You can measure vertical foot candles or horizontal foot candles. And so what we probably need are some definitions in here that define that. Lumen is actually the light output. Foot candles is how it's measured.
Okay.
But I, and I think there's probably some things that are in other ordinances that we might want to look at.
Yeah.
That have to do with the quality of light, establishing consistency like with the color of light. And, because we have so many different light sources now. We, we have communities, well, I didn't see it in most of this stuff, but some communities are actually requiring dark sky compliant light, which I think is a good idea. And I think we might also want to reference standards. The Illumination Engineering Society of North America has standards for illumination that we could at least reference as a starting point for illumination in parking lots, at building entries, along walkways. Just so we have some consistency in how lighting works across particularly commercial properties or institutional properties. Right, right now, we deal very narrowly with light trespass. And the whole idea of light as a design element can go way beyond that. And it's not just about the function, it's cutoff.
And you, and now you could have some, start to have some energy efficiency standards on there too. You know, LED is becoming much more prevalent on, on parking lot lighting.
Times when lights in parking lots at retail, when they can be on. So we could go through a whole series of things. I think we can get in much more depth than just trespass of light.
The other thing I was going to add, and Carrie, maybe it's somewhere else, but what do we require? And I saw in some of the other, other ordinances of how, what we actually require on the lighting plan. Maybe I missed it, but do we have a standard of what they need to provide on each of those?
It's really just the foot candle plan measured at the, at the lot lines.
Okay, so there probably should be more, more requirements to what we require on that plan across the lot, the foot candles, the pole heights, you know, all that stuff should be part of the submittal, right? I mean, I would think.
If we want to get into that depth of regulation, we could.
I don't know if necessarily regulation, but just to know what they have. You know, may, they may not be providing all that for someone to, to take a look at it. I'm not sure we need to get into pole height regulation so much. Maybe there's a max, maximum, but you know, some areas are really strict on that and, which ends up doubling them on the poles on your site, which is, I don't think is necessarily where we want to go, but at least I don't want to go. But some kind of standards for that, at least getting that requirement and so we can see it when it comes in.
Having them at least put it on the plan.
Yeah. And, and you know, the, I forget which, there's a couple of examples in here, the cities they had, you know, specific pieces that needed to be shown on that plan.
Commissioner Forrest and then Commissioner Carr.
I know that we had, have, isn't it, is it still in our ordinances that we prohibited lighted signs pointing toward public parks? Is that still there?
It is.
Because I know that they got a variance for the pinstripes one pointing toward, you know, the lights in that retail area pointing towards Centennial Lakes. I'd like to learn more about other alternative lightings and, and how that can be effective versus backlit Lexan signs and things like that. But maybe there's some type of citywide consistent or, or maybe a development consistent type of lighting that's, whether it's, you know, lighting the face of a front wooden sign or something that, that people then would know, I mean, you kind of train yourself, you know, to look for those kinds of things then too. And then we could avoid some of the more harsh lighting situations that are in the wrong places.
Commissioner Carr.
Just based on what you've provided to us, I mean, appears as though the city of Edina has pretty much about the bare bones ordinance set of any of the cities. It only addresses one particular issue. It doesn't make exceptions. Some of the other cities make exceptions for outdoor recreational fields where those are allowed to be lit up, for emergency lighting for police officers, for holiday lighting. And then, of course, we don't address any of the issues that have been brought up here about light pollution. So I, I guess the question is, I mean, should we take on trying to draft a more comprehensive ordinance? Or should we proceed with making a change, at least on the foot candles, as our current ordinance exists? That certainly would be an improvement. We could start there and in the meantime, work on something that's more comprehensive. Because I know some of the cities, like I thought it was Tucson, they have really, at night, it's pretty dark in some of these cities. And I think, you know, I, it's very commendable for a variety of different reasons, for energy saving and also light pollution. But those, that type of ordinance requires a lot of work. I take it's a year to do that. And the question is whether we should just at least move forward on the light candles where we're, like you say, we're the highest of any city that you've looked at in Minnesota.
I was just going to suggest as maybe a two-step process. One is you, you lower it right now for the easy one. And then after that, so at least you're not, well, five times everyone else or whatever that number was. So I would, I would, that's what I would recommend is we tick off that easy one here and then there's, then, then it's, there's a lot more after that potentially too.
It's not huge text changes.
It's a very, it's a very simple one.
So, I mean, should we move forward for a public hearing at the, whenever the next opportunity is to do that on this? And I think that two-step makes a lot of.
That's a good idea.
I see a lot of nodding heads on that, so. Because it will take, I mean, it, I think it sounds like a good idea to, to tackle the more sophisticated review as well, but that'll take us a little while. Everybody good with that?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Good. Great. Next item is conflict of interest bylaws. You may have noticed that there was nothing in the packet on this. Which I'll take partial responsibility for. So, you know, we have talked from time to time about kind of conflict issues that come up. We, when we did our training with the city attorney, we had some discussion about conflict of interest. And now we've got a couple of new commission members and it's, it's, one of the things that we benefit from on our commission is we have a lot of people who are in the industry, you know, in one way or another. And that, that affords us great expertise and it affords the community great expertise of people who by day work in some fashion associated with planning and by night volunteer their time to work on these things. But it also raises the question about, you know, what if somebody on the commission wants to work on something that's in Edina? And, you know, should the price of being on the commission be that you can't work on something in Edina? And I kind of think it shouldn't be. But I think we have to have a discussion about that and I think we have to figure out what the rules are in terms of, you know, what that means and if you're going to work on something. And I think the easy case is if you're working on a project and it comes before the commission, obviously you have to recuse yourself. But, and, and frankly, some, Carrie and Mike Platter and I had a chance to meet with the city attorney at the tail end of last week to just start to talk about this a little bit. The easy cases actually are the quasi judicial work that we do. So if there's an application that comes in front of us, it's pretty easy. If you're, if you're working on that, you can't be on the side that's deciding it. The little tougher case is what if you're, you're part of a big firm and your firm is working on it? Should you be precluded from acting on that? I think we got to talk about that. But I think as we talked about it more, the even more difficult cases are the legislative ones. So if we're talking about, you know, working, we're talking about some change that we might want to make in the code or a study that we might want to do or actually doing a study, can we, can the firm that we work with then turn around and be a consultant on that study? And I think we just have to talk through those things and figure out where we think the proper line is on that. And so I just wanted to introduce it tonight because I've gotten a couple of questions about it from folks. And the city attorney had some good suggestions and I think he and Carrie were going to try and draft something up. For us to at least talk about as language that we can consider. And what I was just going to suggest is that we do that at our next meeting to, and then I think we'll stimulate some conversation about where the right lines are so that all of us can feel comfortable that we're doing the right thing in any given situation. And at the same time, we're not discouraging people from volunteering to do this work when they have expertise and unfairly excluding them from, from that work. Commissioner Sher.
Could we also include in the discussion what recusing oneself looks like? As I've watched different commissions and been on this one, I have seen people make a statement that they have had some dealings with a particular proponent or somebody that's in front of them, but not actually remove themselves from the dais and not remove themselves from the discussion and not remove themselves from voting. I have seen other people state after participating in all the discussion and everything else that they're going to recuse themselves and not vote. I've seen others recuse upfront and actually depart the room and not be present for any of the discussion. And I, I think it's kind of a mixed message to the public. I guess I'd like to be really clear about in certain situations, what is the prescribed action that the commissioner would take?
I, I think that's an excellent suggestion and I think we should be really prescriptive about that. You know, sometimes there, people have concluded rightly so that they don't have a conflict, but they feel like it's important to disclose.
Oh, yes. And there might be.
And therefore you would disclose that, but still stay and participate.
We could enumerate, I think, what the circumstances are that apply to each level of how one would recuse oneself.
Right. I, I think that's a great idea. Any other suggestions for when that comes back to us? Okay. So Carrie, if you and Roger can put something together and I'm happy to help put that on the agenda for the next time. One other item for the next agenda, we are short an officer now since Commissioner Potts was the secretary of the commission. So we should put something for the next agenda and to add a secretary to the, to the commission. Yeah. So correspondence and petitions, the attendance chart is in here. You can consult with Jackie if there are any errors on that. And a council update was in here as well. Some, it looked like the second page of a council update, but maybe that was the, the sum of what they did during that period. Chair and commission comments, any, any things to share from the commission? Commissioner Platter?
I say next Tuesday at the council work session, the living streets is being shared with them as, as to where we're at with that. And there are a lot of guidelines written to date. I didn't show it here on purpose because it needs to go to the, the council probably first, but I just had a, a comment or a question for the commission. As we go through this, there's debate amongst our committee, is that something that's a guideline or is it codified along the way? And I say that in the sense of, you know, if it's a guideline that, well, it mainly impacts the city when they redo their streets, right? So, but however, you know, like the project tonight that came in, when they're redoing the streets around there, what does that do? And we've had many instances when they've come in and said, well, is it a code? No. So we're not interested or type of thing. Although PUD have more respect for that. But I just, I'd open it for a little discussion just to say, what, what do people think on that or what? Are there guidelines that we give to somebody or is it code that people have to meet? I'm just curious from people's sense on, on that piece.
Well, I, I guess I'm not, without seeing the guidelines and having a chance to, I mean, I, one notion that jumps to mind for me is, is on the PUD, it's one of those things that we could certainly say, you know, how you do on this will affect how, how receptive we are to approving a PUD. That would be one of those kind of criteria. So it, it kind of remains a guideline in the sense that we're looking for you to, this is one of the touchstones and gives you some guidance as to how you can do well on that, but we're not going to prescribe it in every situation. Commissioner Carr.
First, I don't believe that they can be made part of the code or ordinance. They're, they are guidelines. They describe different types of roads, different types of sidewalks treatments, different types of ways of pedestrian access. So it's, it's again, more of a guideline on how to structure your streets, sidewalks, et cetera, crosswalks so that they're pedestrian friendly. However, I think it would be useful is that once this plan gets approved, that we have someone, maybe Mark Nolan, come to the planning commission.
Definitely, yeah.
And talk about the plan so that again, we can get those concepts reflected when there are sketch plans that come before us.
I think that's an excellent idea. Get us more educated on it. Commissioner Forrest.
I understand that, you know, that, that whole thing is very location dependent too. But as you go through this process, if there are things that you think should be more universal and are, can be applied universally, it would be great for us to hear that too, things that we might want to see codified.
And perhaps what, you know, it's going to be, I don't know how many pages long the actual guide will be, but it's not.
It's not as long as, not as long as you think it might be actually.
No. But we may even want to do a checklist, we may even want to do a checklist just for easy reference for the planning commission members so that when a sketch plan or a project comes before us, we have a checklist of what the important guiding principles are under that, under those guidelines.
That's kind of one of my thoughts is I don't necessarily want every time have to bring it into it. It should be something that they're doing because it are, is, well, guidelines or it is, at least something is written that you have to adhere to our guidelines or something like that, so.
Or maybe it's a submission requirement about you have to, part of your narrative has to be how you're doing with the guideline.
I just wouldn't want to leave it on the whim that hopefully somebody remembered to do it.
Yeah.
Many of the aspects though of the Living Streets project are really within the purview of the city, not the developers so much. The developers have a single piece of property. They're not necessarily dealing with the streets. The Pentagon Park may be a little different situation because it's such a large property. But usually we're getting smaller projects on one parcel. And that's one of the difficulties we've had is how we connect these parcels together to have a unified plan. So I think the city has to take responsibility for that as well and how they design streets, intersections, et cetera.
Very good. Is there a report from the initial Valley View Wooddale meeting? Wasn't that last week?
I was kind of hoping you would take this. So jump in here, Arlene, because I, I don't have my notes in front of me. But we had a, what I felt was a very successful meeting.
It was a kickoff meeting?
It was our kickoff meeting. So I don't think we have the official number, but I, I would say 70, 50?
Wow.
Very likely, there, there was, it was well attended.
75.
75.
That's a great turnout.
Okay, 75. And majority were residents. It was an interesting process. We broke into small groups to kind of collect ideas and thoughts. But you can imagine many people came with, with things they just had to get off their chest, so. so sort of managing that process, I thought Carrie and Karen and they did a great job, great job. A lot of listening, a lot of batting of the head. But like I said, what was most important was we captured the input. And I think most of the residents were pretty engaged in that. We didn't see anyone get up and leave, really.
The tide kind of turned. I mean, because when we started out, there was initially a lot of skepticism about, what are you doing here? What's going on? There must be some plan, the city wants something.
What are you going to do to us?
Exactly. You're going to make this into 50th and France, you're going to, you know, and it went on and on. And, I mean, some people were very adamant that there's got to be an ulterior motive. But I think, again, because of, you know, a lot of it, because of Carrie and Karen, too, they were very gracious in how they explained things, and I think, I really think the mood flipped, and people who weren't engaged originally became more engaged. And what really struck me is, with this little brainstorming session we had, was the similarities, you know, the types of things I wouldn't have anticipated people wanted to see, or people were concerned about, that showed up across the board, like outdoor dining, things like that. And it was, it was, it was really interesting, and it gives us a starting point. I know it was kind of a, like one guy said, it's like junior high here, you know, we're doing this little breakout session, but it was good, because it triggered some things that we weren't aware were going to be issues, so that it would be helpful. Currently, there's an application on the website for people who want to be on the planning team. We're looking for four residents and two business individuals. And that's going to be administrative, they don't get any more say in what comes out of it necessarily. But it's more people who can help us engage the rest of the public as we go forward, and...
I believe we're reviewing those applications, is it next week?
Yeah, Monday, yeah, so.
All right, so that's the deadline. If time permits, we'll also be also reviewing the consultant applications, is that what we agreed?
Yes.
I think we did. Yep. So we are receiving applicants, applications for the consultant, who will be helping us write that small area plan. And as I've stressed many times before, we're looking, we're all looking to this eagerly, and that was explained to the group as well, that this is a process that we're hoping to be able to create and duplicate for the future. And that's mostly why we're doing it, that if there's any ulterior motive, that probably was it. We want to be ahead of the game, ahead of the curve, and we want to have that process ready at our fingertips should the need arise.
And most of the public engagement will begin in the fall, so there won't be a lot happening as far as outreach during the summer months, it'll be more planning, planning what we're going to do in the fall.
Getting the infrastructure in place to do the fall engagement. Well, that's terrific news. Congratulations to both of you, that's great work. I can report on Grandview, that the city council at its last meeting approved the issuance of a request for interest to, for a development partner. This has been a long process to try to choose the next path to move forward on redevelopment of the Grandview district, consistent with the framework that grew out of a similar process that you're describing. And I think it's mid-August when the responses are due, and the council hopes to interview applicants in early September, try to select a tentative development partner by mid-September, and then there'll be about a 60-day period of trying to work out a work plan with that development partner that will kind of outline the process from there over the next six months of generating three or four development scenarios for the public work site, and perhaps the bus garage site. And so I am, I think that's a good step forward. One of the things that I'm going to encourage the council to do is use the time between now and that mid-November to do, to do some work on fleshing out the ideas of what the scope and the size and the type of public use that anchors that public work site as the development framework talks about, what that's going to be. And we have a good five or six months here to be able to work on that, and that might be, you know, maybe that's the Park and Rec Commission, maybe that's the, or the Park Board, maybe that's the Arts and Culture Commission, but suggest to the council that we not, we not squander that time, and we work on trying to shape up what the type of public use would be. So that's what I have to report on that front. Any other comments from the commission staff?
Just quickly, if the council connection wasn't in your packet, the last council meeting, the council did approve the Lenar project, the final rezoning, and the comprehensive plan amendment that was recommended by planning commission, and there were no changes to that, so just, that's all I have.
And I would say, I'm not quite sure where to go with this whole comprehensive plan density issue. We did touch on it at our last meeting, and I'm, I feel like there needs to be more to that, but I'm not sure where to start, short of maybe just part of the whole comprehensive plan process. But it's going to hit us sooner than that with projects like being proposed tonight, so we'll have to have further discussions about that. Okay, you know, lightning fast, three hours and 57 minutes, brings us to adjournment.
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye, we are adjourned.